It is now five o'clock, February 5th, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the city's housing assets successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez? Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protam Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez absent.
This is the time in place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda per Government Code Section 549-54.3. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I do not see anyone that would like to address the council. Did you wanna, did you fill out a card? Well, our meeting will be starting at six. If you want to wait until then, okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, can we have declaration of closed session items by our city attorney, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have two closed session items this evening. They are both related. It is existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1. Case name and the case number is set forth on the agenda. Item A is on behalf of the City Council. Item B on behalf of the Airport Authority. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or the commencement of the regular six o'clock session.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess to closed session and a regular meeting will convene at 6:00 PM.
(applause) (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Please take your seats. We will be starting in one second. Let's make sure that all your phones are off. Check your phones. It is now six, six o'clock, February 5th, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the city's housing assets successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protam Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
May we have our closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had two closed session items this evening, one for the City Council and one for the Airport Authority. They related to the same case. It was existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1. The case name and the case number is set forth on the agenda. At this time, there is reportable action. The council on a vote of four to one with Councilmember Gomez voting no, agreed to file a petition with the California Supreme Court to challenge the failure of the appellate court to issue a ruling on the writ of mandate. And that was a four to one vote. So that is the reportable action at this time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The invocation this evening will be delivered by Pastor Dane Davis of First Christian Church. And the pledge of allegiance will be led by Police Chief Rick Bessinger. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. And Daniel, Chapter Nine, Daniel at the end of his prayer says, "Give ear, O God, and hear. Open your eyes and see your city that bears your name. We do not make requests of you because we are righteous, but because of your great mercy. O Lord, listen. O Lord, forgive. O Lord, hear and act. For your sake, O my God, do not delay, because your city and your people bear your name." Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we do come to you not because of our greatness, but because of your greatness. Not because we are so much deserving of mercy, but because you are the author of mercy. Lord, we thank you for our city, the city of Victorville. Lord, many will look down on this city, Lord, but you have great things in mind for this city. And so we lift it up to you tonight. Lord, we pray for our City Council, Mayor Garcia, and each of our City Council leaders, our city attorney, our city manager, and our staff. We pray that you would be with each and every one, Lord. We pray for unity in decisions that are made. We pray, O God, that you would give us great patience and forethought as decisions are made and statements are made. And each who may come tonight, Lord, to make a statement or presentation, we pray that you would be with each one and organizations. Lord, once again, we thank you for your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. And we just pray for your wisdom and guidance tonight. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. (applause)
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we do have a presentation by Dana Armstrong, Environmental Program Manager, awarding the winners of the Victorville Recycles Week School Competition. Dana?
Are we on? There we are. Thank you, Mayor Garcia. I'm so pleased to be here tonight, and I'm so excited to see all these people that came here just to learn Victorville Recycles Week. I'm sure that's why you came for the meeting tonight. Yay! I'm thrilled to be here. I want to thank Mayor Garcia and the members of the City Council for giving me time here tonight. I'm here to recognize the winners of our annual Victorville Recycles Week event. This event is held during the first week of November each year. It's sponsored by the City of Victorville Recycling Program and Bertec Waste Industries. Victorville Recycles Week was started in November 2007, so this is the 12th year that we've sponsored activities. Victorville Recycles Week is intended to increase awareness of and participation in the city's various recycling programs by getting our local schools involved. During this week, schools participate in various activities to earn points. The schools that earn the most points win cash prizes. And individual students can also win prizes for the poster contest and the recycled sculpture contest. Prizes are provided by Bertec Waste Industries and the City of Victorville Recycling Program. Here are some of the highlights from this year's event. Seventeen schools participated. Nine hundred and two posters from eight schools were received in the poster contest. Seventy-three sculptures from six schools in the recycled sculpture contest. There were forty-one class presentations with about eleven hundred students. Eleven schools signed up for recycling assemblies by Mr. Eco, the recycling superhero, and those assemblies reached about eighty-two hundred students. Fourteen schools participated in our community cleanup day in October with over four hundred and fifty volunteers. We had eleven schools with the CRV bottle and can recycling contest. We had six schools take tours of our Victor Valley MRF. And all told, we estimate that we made contact with over ten thousand students during this year's event. And since the event started, I think we've reached about ninety-five thousand students since the program began in 2007. At this time, I'd like to invite Josie Vargas to come, the municipal programs manager for Bertec, to come forward. And she's going to bring forward our winning sculpture and posters. And I just want to acknowledge Victorville's support of this event. Victorville Disposal is a Bertec company. They're our city's hauler for trash and recycling. And Bertec is a financial co-sponsor. And more importantly, Josie is the main coordinator of this event, and she does almost all the outreach to the schools and those forty-one class presentations. So thank you, Josie and Bertec. So now I would like to invite Mayor Garcia to come forward because we're going to present the awards to the winners. And we will start with the winner of the recycled sculpture contest. I would like to invite Hector Portillo III to come forward. Hector is a sixth grade student.[734.82][734.82](applause) I'm going to get out of the way there. Hector's a sixth grade, fifth grade student, pardon me, at West Palms Conservatory. His sculpture, we had seventy-three sculptures this year. His sculpture was of Michael Jackson, as you can see, from Thriller, and his, the slogan was "Recycling is a thrill." So it was fabulous. We loved it. It was, we have never seen anything like that. And it was, it was the consensus first-place winner. Congratulations. And Josie's going to show the council.[775.63][775.63](applause) And just so you know, the various sculptures are currently on display in the lobby of City Hall. They're going to go away by Thursday, so you still have two days to check them out. But yes, we had seventy-three sculptures, so you did a fabulous job. Congratulations. And we really enjoyed it. This winning sculpture will be on display at our Victor Valley MRF for a year. We're going to get a picture.
Can you bring Michael Jackson? We have to have Michael Jackson in the picture.
Hector, can you hold it, maybe? Why don't you hold your sculpture?
Y'all just get closer and look past. That would be great. Make sure Mom gets it.[826.04][826.04](applause)
Congratulations, Hector. You can have a seat. We keep the sculpture, but you get the check and the certificate. You can, great job. Next, I would like to invite Nika Lyons to come forward. Nika is a sixth grade student from Mountain View Montessori School, and she's the winner of our poster contest. Here she comes.[855.32][855.32](applause) We had nine hundred and two posters entered in this year's contest. Nika features the slogan "Reduce, Reuse, Recycle." And again, this was the consensus winner. It was so cute. It just looked like we're having fun and we're going to reduce, reuse, recycle. I hope that her poster will inspire all of us to step up our recycling efforts. This will also be on display at the MRF for the next year.[888.26][888.26](applause) One more. Congratulations, Nika. Great job.[902.82][902.82](applause) All right. Finally, we will recognize the first-place school. And we're bringing the coveted Victorville Recycles Week trophy up. And I would like to invite Ann Martin, teacher from Mountain View Montessori, and Tanya Newell, the principal from Mountain View Montessori School, to come forward.[926.13][926.13](applause) And let's take a picture and then I'll talk. How's that? All right.[939.86][939.86](laughing)
Excellent. One, two.
Thank you, Sue. I want to brag a little bit about Mountain View Montessori. The sixth time that Mountain View Montessori has been the grand prize winner, they won in 2011, 2014, 15, 16, 17, and now 2018.[960.04][960.04](applause) They did a fantastic job. Their students submitted a hundred and sixty-six posters, fifteen sculptures. They had seven in-class presentations, two recycling assemblies. All their kindergarteners toured our recycling facility. They filled up a CRV recycling bin dumpster twice. And they, what I really love about their school is they incorporate recycling into their curriculum, and it really is a part of what they do and who they are. And you've really, really taken it to that step so high. It's really awesome to see how you incorporate that into your lessons. So thank you. As the first-place winner, Mountain View Montessori receives a check for a thousand dollars from Bertec. And more importantly, they get to keep the coveted recurring trophy at their school year. So their, it's their heart, we're going to try and encourage the other schools to step it up because somebody's got to win. But congratulations, and thank you very much for all your efforts to promote recycling. They get to keep the trophy. That one goes home with them. And then, yeah, that's it. I just have a couple of other words. And I, before concluding, I just want to remind people about why recycling is important and why it's such a good idea and why we're promoting it. Just reminder, every pound of trash that goes into a trash can in Victorville goes to the landfill. It's dumped at the landfill. It's crushed with a bulldozer and covered with dirt. It's gone forever. It's a waste of resources, and it's a waste of money. The city currently pays thirty-eight, over thirty-eight dollars per ton to dispose of trash, and it adds up to almost three million dollars a year. And that's not the city's money. That's your money. That's money that you're paying through your trash, your trash bill. And we really don't want you to pay that much. We want you to recycle more so that we can control those trash disposal costs. And that's why we promote recycling so much. Last year in Victorville, we recycled over eight thousand tons of material, and we saved over three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in landfill disposal costs. But I think we could double or triple that amount. But we need you and all your family and friends to recycle as much as possible. And that's why it's important to, to participate. In closing, I just want to thank all the schools, the students. I want to thank Josie and Bertec. I want to thank the City Council for their time and their support of recycling. And hopefully, the message of recycling got out there, and we will all be inspired to recycle more and step up our recycling efforts. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Take care. Thank you, Mayor.[1152.01][1152.01](applause)
Thank you. Beautiful presentation. At this time, I will ask our city clerk to present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Please silence your cellphones. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete a white speaker card located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the public hearings, written communications, or public comment sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting will be willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the presiding officer. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 549-57.9, Pino Code Section 403. All the documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. Thank you.
Thank you. This evening, we do not have any appeal hearings. Therefore, we move on to public hearings. And item number one, a continued public hearing to hear arguments for and against a municipal code amendment and conditional use permit with environmental exemptions to conditionally allow movie theaters to sell beer and wine for onsite consumption. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council find the municipal code amendment and conditional use permit exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Introduce and waive further reading of Ordinance Number 2387 approving the code amendment and adopt Resolution Number 19-001 approving the conditional use permit.
Thank you. At this time, council members, do you have any questions of staff at this time? And it's a two-minute time limit. I'll start with Ms. Jones.
I have none asked my questions at the last meeting. Thank you.
Mayor Protam?
Yes, I would like further discussion on the question of the use of alcohol in the Cinemark in regards to the rights of minors and children. I don't feel that we have discussed the setting that would be proper and healthy.
Excuse me. These are questions of staff. Is this a question for staff?
Yes, I would like for it to be.
Okay.
Okay, so I would like to hear from, from the staff and from the members.
Well, at this time, it's just staff. I will call the public later. So did you have a question for staff at this time?
Yes, the question is, what, what are the actual rights of minors and children in regards to alcohol? I feel that we have not discussed that at all.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Regarding youth and their access to alcohol, this code amendment that's proposed and also the conditions that would be associated with the conditional use permit for Cinemark Theater requires that they go through lead training. That would instruct the people that are serving the alcohol to properly check for ID so minors are not exposed to alcohol consumption or having the ability to purchase.
My concern is that basically what I keep hearing is what are the rights of adults having the right to drink? And I do not hear any subject matter, factual or otherwise, regarding the question of the children and the minors who were attending that theater or any theater.
Yeah, so that, that is a policy decision of the council. If the council chooses not to approve this code amendment, then alcohol would, would not be served within the theater. And so that's, that's, I think, would be the consideration of the council if, if they want to restrict alcohol. They have the complete right to deny this application.
Thank you.
I have no questions at this time.
Ms. Gomez?
So I know we're, we're going to be looking at a CUP. Would you mind expressing why the planning commissioner with the three to approval couldn't keep that and why it has to come through a CUP here to see if there's an alteration? That's my first question. The second one is, since we had a three to two approval, how long has this process been in play for consideration of the city?
The process of this code amendment started a little over a year ago when Cinemark Theaters came and first met with staff, and then staff brought the issue before the planning commission. The planning commission said that they would like to review the proposal further. And that's when in November, they recommended the approval of the code amendment and the conditional use permit that's before the council tonight. The reason why it's, it's coming in two, two actions is because the, currently, the municipal code does not allow for alcohol sales in theaters. So essentially, if the alcohol code amendment is denied, then the conditional use permit would not, it would be a moot point. The conditional use permit would not be active. So the, it's, the planning commission doesn't have the authority to approve the conditional use permit on their own without the code amendment being in place. So that's why the conditional use permits before you as well.
So, so the planning commission doesn't have enough power, but don't they have the power to do quasi-judicial decisions? And wouldn't this fall under that guise?
It would if the code amendment was already in place. So if we already had a code that allowed for alcohol sales, then that conditional use permit would have stand as approved unless it got appealed to City Council.
Thank you. At this time, I will reopen the public hearing, and I will call on anyone who has submitted a speaker card, and I will make it a two-minute time limit.
Mayor Garcia, it may be appropriate for us to call the applicant since this is a public hearing dealing with their issue, and I would not impose a time limit on the applicant given that they sort of due process rights.
Okay, very good. At this time, I call the applicant to speak, and I believe he may have a PowerPoint.
Good evening. My name is Steve Rawlings. I was here just a few weeks ago, and I thank you again for allowing us an opportunity to come back. Joining me this evening is Matt Dunn, who is with the Cinemark Corporation. And I'll let him kind of describe a little bit in our presentation here, his role with the company. But essentially, he's the person that's been in charge of the alcohol service program throughout the nation. With that, I, I didn't want to be necessarily completely repetitive of some of the comments that I had made last time. I did do a leave behind, and I gave you all some, some additional materials here that I thought would be very informative for you. But so tonight, I have just kind of a five, a five-slide presentation that hopefully will just kind of recap some of the points that I had made last, in the last presentation. And then Matt's here to kind of elaborate on some of those points and obviously is available for questions. So with that, I think I just do that. There we go. You know, as I had mentioned before, Cinemark Theaters is one of the largest theater operators in the United States. They're actually, I think, third. They operate about three hundred and forty movie theaters across forty-one states. Cinemark is in a very competitive atmosphere. Not only are they competing with other major movie theater chains for audiences, but they're also competing with the home theater market. All of us have the big screen TVs and Netflix accounts and Amazon Prime accounts, and so they're challenged. But Cinemark has, has been, you know, investing literally millions upon millions of dollars into enhancing the experience at their movie theaters throughout the country, whether it be just remodeling of their lobbies or re-outfitting their, their seedings, and then, of course, upgrading their, their menu items and also, you know, offering luxury amenities such as alcoholic beverages. And they have been committed to doing this. They're committed into your community to, you know, trying to enhance the experience as they've been doing throughout the country. Currently, they operate about a hundred and fifty theaters across the country, and Matt probably has the exact number, but it, where they have introduced alcohol. And we have currently thirty-three here in the state of California that are actually licensed to serve alcohol. As I had mentioned to you folks, you know, earlier or last time, the whole movie theater industry has, has gone this way because, again, it's a challenging environment. And Matt probably has the exact number, but where they have introduced alcohol. And we have currently 33 here in the state of California that are actually licensed to serve alcohol. As I had mentioned to you folks, you know, earlier or last time, the whole movie theater industry has gone this way. Because again, it's a challenging environment for the movie theaters. No longer do they have the monopoly on the content. Many people can stream a movie that's at the theater right now at their home. And they're having to deal with that. And of course, you know, we've got competition. Cinemark's out there, you know, investing in themselves. So it's a very competitive market. So every major movie theater chain has been introducing alcohol as a luxury amenity. They're not looking to change the atmosphere of it. They want it to be a family fun entertainment center. And they simply want those people that choose to have that to be able to have a beer or a glass of wine while they're watching the movie. Currently in California, there's approximately or nearly about 200 locations already licensed. The major movie theater companies obviously have done this, but there's a lot of smaller regional movie theater companies. The theater company that's in Hesperia is a theater company that I think only operates three or four movie houses. And they're currently serving. This was just simply a quick number here to give you an idea of some of the big major companies that are here in the state of California and how many locations that they currently are operating. And many of those operations are those that movie houses are very similar to the movie theater that you have here in your community, associated with a large, you know, shopping type of mall. And so as you can see, that there are quite a few of those. And they're, and we're continuing to license, and all of the movie theater companies are as well. These are the locations here in the state of California that Cinemark operates. As I think I mentioned to you guys last time, they operate under the name Cinemark or under the name Century Movie Theaters. And we're, you know, throughout the state of California in communities, you know, as far north as Chico and all throughout Southern California. I mentioned this too, and I mentioned the widespread, you know, or that there's a lot of movie theater companies now in California. And we have not heard, been hearing any reports of other communities having issues in their communities with this service. And as you can tell now, there's a very large footprint. And this is a very, very large-scale operation. So these, you know, this isn't just a small number. The last slide that I wanted to kind of mention to you was, you know, the security types of measures that we're implementing and proposing here in this, in our theater here in Victorville. I can honestly tell you that this goes above and beyond kind of any of the measures that we've done in any other community. It starts with the fact that we have actually armed security guards on weekends. And we're contracting with a company that's assigning us off-duty police officers as an extra measure of security. We have a state-of-the-art scanning ID device that when you swipe the ID, it kind of timestamps when you were there. So if somebody's coming back in to purchase a second beverage, we know that, hey, it's been 30 minutes, or it's been five minutes, or it's been 15 minutes since they made that last purchase, which allows us to monitor the activity of any one individual in terms of the frequency of consumption. We have, as I described to you last time, we have frequent auditorium inspections and monitoring. These aren't just monitors where people just walk in and take a look, as I described to you. They walk up and down the aisles, and they stay there and try to observe behaviors. We, you know, we're proposing not more than three drinks per anybody visiting. Statistically speaking, only about 10% of the adult population will actually make the purchase of a beer or wine. That purchase is typically made before the movie starts. The number of people that actually make a purchase of a second alcoholic beverage is about 10% of that original 10%. And as I mentioned to you before, the only real reason any of us actually ever leave the movie after it started is typically because we have to go to the restroom. I have never personally got up and bought more Milk Duds. I've never got up out of a movie and got a refill of soda. The only times I've ever left the movie is because either a babysitter called me or I had to use the restroom. So we don't have that often people coming back and purchasing more than one beverage for themselves. We also are going to be doing wristbanding so that when we are doing the monitoring of the movie theaters, it's very easy to, you know, identify who's supposed to be having a beverage in their hand. We go through extensive employee training. I can't emphasize this enough. This is a very, very large corporation with a lot of employees. They take their policies and procedures extremely seriously. And they spend a lot of money on training their employees on customer service. You know, if somebody has a bad customer experience, they don't come back. So we go through, a lot of times, training people on not only customer service, to be at the highest level, but also when it comes to the service of alcohol. As was mentioned, we are conditioned to send everybody to the lead training program, which is actually put on by the state alcoholic beverage control. And they spend a great deal of time, actually, most of the time, on how to do a proper ID check to make sure that you're not serving minors. And the second part of the course is on making sure that you're not selling somebody that who's showing signs of intoxication. In our movie theater, and our proposed method for dispensing alcohol is that you would come to a designated point at the concession stand. So you have to be in the lobby area to get the beer or the wine. We do that for a couple of reasons. One is we have a lot of management in the lobby area. But the second thing is too, we can get a very, very good visual of the individual that we're actually handing the beer or wine to, to be able to observe those people to make sure that we're not over-serving individuals. And we can do a proper ID check. The wristbands do not, you know, mean that your ID doesn't get checked. If you have a wristband, we still ask you for the ID again, and we scan through the scanning device. So it's not a substitute. It's just simply a helpful tool when our monitors are in the auditorium. And the last point that I want to make is that all beer and wine is served in like clear plastic cups, which is different than what we serve sodas or coffees in. So it's very easy to see, you know, that, those containers when you're in there doing an inspection of the auditorium. So kind of with that, I think that's, you know, an overview. I appreciate your time and your consideration. I think that Matt had a couple of things to add to. And obviously, we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Good evening. As Steve said, my name is Matt Dunn. I'm with Cinemark USA Incorporated. I have been the director of alcohol with that company for about 12 years now. My job is basically to activate and implement our alcohol program nationally. And that includes all the safety measures that we put in and ensuring that we do serve alcohol in the safest way possible throughout all of our theaters nationally. One good point that Steve had brought up that I really want to emphasize to you guys is that I understand that in an area where there's not a lot of theaters that have this kind of service, that people don't necessarily understand what the implications of that could be or what the effects of it could be. We do not serve alcohol in a way that allows people to get drunk in our theaters. We do everything we can that's in our power to limit the consumption of alcohol within our theaters. Alcohol is brought in as a luxury amenity and a luxury amenity only for those people over the age of 21. We don't sell to minors. We have, as Steve pointed out, ID scanners that we scan on every single purchase. We make sure that all of the sales that we have don't negatively affect our guests in any way, whether they're consuming alcohol or not consuming alcohol. For us, alcohol revenues only contribute about 7% or 8% of our total food and beverage revenue and obviously, none of our ticket revenue. So if we were to start having negative effects on our customer base based off of the service of alcohol within our theaters, it's going to become a negative for the overall customer experience and our business in a very fast way. So we make sure that our theaters maintain a family-friendly environment, that we do it in the safest possible way, and that everything is done with the guests in mind. And making sure that, like I said before, whether you're consuming alcohol or not, it doesn't negatively affect your experience within our business. A few other points that I wanted to bring up that Steve had sort of touched on. Beyond the lead training that all of our customers, all of our employees that go, have anything to do with the sale or service of alcohol go through, we also have a Cinemark Standards, Cinemark Alcohol Standards Program, which is a six-hour program that every employee has to go through as well on top of the California Lead Program, which goes through deeper details on our own internal policies. It reiterates a lot of the California Lead Policies, talking about, you know, exactly how to deal with and notice signs of intoxication, how to cut off sales from a customer or deny sales of alcohol to a customer. Again, proper ID techniques, checking, making sure that the ID itself is proper and that the person who's presenting it to you is the person that's actually on the ID. And going through a litany of other things to make sure, again, that our employees have all the information that they need to provide that service in the safest possible manner. I understand that there's a lot of people here tonight that don't necessarily want alcohol in the theater. And I want to ensure all of you and all of them that we do this in the safest possible way, or we wouldn't have done it in 150 of our locations nationally. Right now, we're at just south of 50% of our total national footprint has alcohol. And we have not seen an uptick in any issues whatsoever with our guest complaints or our safety concerns in regards to those locations that actually have alcoholic service. With that, I think Steve's kind of touched on pretty much everything else that I would talk about. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
I have a question. When you said you generate between 7% and 8% of the total revenue that's alcohol?
70% of our food and beverage revenue, so.
So it's combined with the other?
Food and beverage meaning not the ticket sales, so not what you buy the tickets for? Our food and beverage revenue is just what's sold at the concession stand?
But then not knowing what the total revenue is, it's difficult for me to understand the dollar amounts.
So, to put it in a way you might be able to understand, our average customer spend when they go to one of our theaters in food and beverage is about $4.50 right now, where our alcohol revenue comes in at around $0.25 to $0.27. So it's significantly less, a very small piece of the pie. And it's really, we highlight that to show that we're only offering this as a luxury amenity, not to influence the character of the building at all. The majority of our sales, our main focus for the customer standpoint is going to be family-friendly and safe so that we can maintain everyone's happiness with the way the building works.
So there's really no real big money gain on this?
I'm sorry?
There's no real money gain as far as I can see.
Well, no. I mean, as far as financially, it doesn't contribute significantly to our bottom line. But what it does, as Steve pointed out, is it keeps us competitive in the market. And it gets people to continue to come out that may, that may want to stay home and have a glass of wine and stream a movie. That may be looking for other options and going to other theaters in the area that have those. So it keeps us competitive in a marketplace that is extremely challenging right now. It offers the 21 and over crowd that we have coming in a luxury amenity offered in a safe way. And it allows us to, you know, continually refresh things and offer customers new options when areas like fountain drinks and sodas are on the decline because of the health risks and stuff that come along with those. So while it doesn't add a great deal of money at the end of the day, it does do a great deal for the theater itself.
Understood. Anyone else have any questions? Ms. Jones?
First of all, can everyone hear me? Terrific, terrific. I don't want to hear any more complaints that I'm so soft-spoken. All right, first of all, Mr. Rawlings, thank you so much for being with us here again. Mr. Dunn, thank you for making a point to come and speak with us.
Of course. I apologize for not being here last time.
No worries at all. I appreciate your being here. So one of the comments made was that you want to make, that you want to provide a luxury experience so that you're remaining competitive in the market. There are two other, as I understand, two other local theaters that serve alcohol. Do you have a way of determining how much business you've lost at the mall theater to those two businesses?
I mean, I would only be able to tell you based off of the theater that's near us. And I, the way that the business has shaken out for the last two years since we sort of built in and added amenities to that, this theater has lost about 25% to 27% of its total business. Now whether that's gone all over to the Apple Valley Theater or whether it's gone to other competitors, I'm not exactly sure.
And do you directly attribute that to the other theaters serving alcohol?
Not necessarily to alcohol. There's additional amenities that are utilized in those theaters. Some of them are newer. Some of them have, you know, the enhanced menus, enhanced seats. So there's a lot of different factors that go into it. All we can really do is try to offer the most high-tech, most competitive with the best amenities that we can at the locations that we're operating.
Okay, very good. And one of the comments made is that you don't want to damage your business, and you want to make sure that, really, that the quote is, "Don't serve alcohol in a way that gets people drunk." Well, with all due respect, if I drank three nine-ounce pours of wine in a two-hour period, I'd be crawling on the floor. So that's a concern to me. And then the other question I have is you say that there are no issues from guests related to alcohol being served in the theater. What mechanism do you do to collect that data? And how is it reported to you?
We have a service line that collects all guest complaints. It's either a phone number that they can call in on, or it's a web-based service that's on our website. And we have a whole team at our office in Plano that compiles all of those and then sends them off to the teams that they affect so that we can deal with them, deal with the guests directly, and make sure that any issues that did come up are resolved. And I have never received one in regards to alcohol. For your former comment or question, I would say that I understand, and that's true. Anybody pretty much that had three nine-ounce wines in a specific period of time could be considered inebriated. But just because the three would be a maximum doesn't mean that that's what we're going to give you. Everything is based off of signs of intoxication or inebriation, whether or not that person is showing those. And then if they are, they'll be cut off from any alcohol service.
Well, then may I ask why go to three drinks? Why not limit it to two or even one?
Well, and what I would say to that is we wouldn't have a problem at all limiting it to two.
What about one?
What we have done in other areas, and the reason that we've had three in certain, in specific locations, is because in some locations, a husband and wife can come up, and the husband can buy two glasses of wine. And that would count as two towards his, but he would have to give one of those to his wife. So that's why we would have three, so that that person wasn't necessarily cut off after one transaction.
And along those same lines, and I know I'm probably running out of time, along those same lines, someone could come up and purchase a drink, not for his wife that's 21 or older, but to someone else. Is that true? That other person wouldn't be IDed?
It would. I mean, I assume it's conceivably possible, but that would be the same in any alcohol establishment that serves alcohol anywhere in the United States.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you so much, Mr. Dunn.
I would like to know if you are, it's a negative sale. You're not making profit. I read your statement, and I want you to substantiate this statement. You said, "Everybody else is doing it." Now, if you're not making money and everybody else is doing it, why would you want to do it?
Well, I wouldn't say that we're not making money. It's not negative in the transaction ledger. I said it's not a significant gain when you compare it to ticket revenues or, you know, soda revenues or popcorn revenues. It doesn't mean that there's not profit to be made, which there is. That being said, it's not a great deal of profit. And we focus on that to offer the luxury amenities to keep people coming out to the theaters so that those people that are looking for that option have it and that we're giving them the best customer and theater experience that they could have as well.
Do you not make more money selling popcorn and hot dogs than you would selling beer and wine?
Yes, that's absolutely the case, yeah.
So therefore, you're saying to me that by selling to adults, you would make more money, but that's not the truth because it's minors who are buying the popcorn and having the hot dog? Why would you want to change, other than saying everybody else is doing it? Give me some facts.
Well, I can tell you that when it comes to overall beverages in our theaters, we have what's called an FOS, which is a frequency of sale, which measures total sales in the, by 1,000 patrons. And our total beverage sales right now are about 232 out of every 1,000 patrons buy some sort of beverage, which makes it 768 would be that they're not buying any beverages at all. So what we're doing is we're trying to offer that group that is 21 and over that's looking for an alternative option, something that they're looking for in a luxury amenity.
Would you make more money if you sold more food rather than liquor or alcohol?
I, I mean.
I'm saying, by definition, you're quote-unquote a restaurant because you sell hot dogs.
Right.
Right? And in regards to food, you sell more hot dogs than you actually sell beer or wine because popcorn is generally number one. Number two is something that would be a little bit better or heavier that will fill you up. So why are you not selling other types of food rather than beer and wine to make more profit?
I mean, I think we're always looking for new revenue streams in the food arena as well. We have multicultural initiatives that go on every year where we bring in things that are specifically targeted at certain demographics, whether it's Indian or Hispanic or other areas that have a different flavor profile from what we currently offer. When we have a Pizza Hut initiative right now, where about 120 of our locations across the United States are going to start selling Pizza Hut pizzas. our locations across the United States are, are going to start selling Pizza Hut pizzas. So I wouldn't say that we don't do that. I would, I would say that we do do that in every way that we possibly can. We try to offer customers as many different amenities as we possibly can.
Have you taken into consideration the fact that this theater is in the mall?
Yeah.
And how are you going to prevent someone who has had two or more drinks from causing a situation in the mall where young people are, where families are, that are not attending the theater? What precautions have you taken?
I, I guess I don't understand. You are saying that somebody's going to leave our premises inebriated?
Well, I'm saying that if somebody is drinking in your theater and they walk out into the mall, what are you going to do about the safety of others who are in attendance at the mall? Because you're responsible for the condition of that individual.
You have thirty seconds?
So, I, I would say to that, that, you know, we always put signage up that says "No alcohol past this point," so obviously nobody could leave through there. We do limit the sale of alcohol to make sure that none of our guests are impaired and that it, it wouldn't be any different from any of the restaurants that are in the surrounding area of the mall with customers that are having drinks and then coming into the mall. In that, in that vein, it, we would be at the same situation as those. We, we do it in the safest possible manner. And we limit the sale and consumption of alcohol on our premises a lot more than a lot of the restaurants that surround the, the mall would.
My last question would be, how have, how are you going to restrict those who are drinking from those who are minors and children in your theater?
I'm, I'm sorry, what do you mean by restrict them?
Well, my question is, are there going to be permitted to sit anywhere? Or have you restricted space for those who are going to be drinking?
No, the, the area would be just like a restaurant would be. You could sit at a table where there's people that are drinking and people that aren't drinking. It would be a co-mingled environment.
Thank you very much.
I'm, I'm a little confused. Is there a access from the mall into the theater and from the theater back to the mall?
Trying to, it's been a while since I've been to this.
I was, I was just there earlier and I, I don't believe so. You have to leave, exit the movie theater, you're outside, and then you have to walk outside to re-enter the mall.
I was under the impression that when you left the theater, you go outside through the parking lot to go back into the mall?
That is correct, yes.
And there's no access directly from the mall to the theater and vice versa?
No, no.
Okay. I'm not, I tried to find in the planning commission, I tried to find some objections or discussions in regard to assumption, the amount and the size of the containers. Is this your request or is this a staff recommendation?
There was, at the, at the planning and zoning commission during some of the discussion, there was additions made into it. So it's the planning and zoning recommendation in with this, some of the areas that we have, we've used in the past that they were comfortable with as far as restrictions and, and, and safety measures that we've put in, in certain places that they had requested that we had adopted here as well. And we were more than happy to do so.
I, I was just curious how that came about because I couldn't find suggested that. So, that's, that's all. I thought maybe it came from the company. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Promise.
So, Madam Mayor, before I proceed, I would like clarification with the questions and timing in terms of if the council questions are hybrid with the inquiries. In other words, is the time limit for both the inquiries and comments, as is right now, going to start or is it separate?
We are applying a two-minute time limit consistent with the policy manual on the council member questions, but obviously their answers don't include that two minutes.
Right. And so my other question was, are the comment portion and the inquiries together or are they not?
After, if, if there's any kind of motion on the table and, and a discussion after that, there'd be additional time for question, or for comments, council member comments typically, yes.
Okay, so in order to clarify, it was my understanding after several meetings that there was a limit of two, but now a council member brought up that there's a limit of three. So now I'm kind of confused. I was under the impression after reading last agenda that we went over that there was a limitation of two alcoholic beverages. But today I've heard otherwise and it has been stated that now it's three. So have we changed that?
No, we have not. I, I think maybe there's a little confusion. You can purchase two alcoholic beverages at the time, but a maximum of three in any one visit to the movie theater.
I got it. Thank you for the clarification. And then I'll impart my comment here. So, Mr. Dunn, if you felt that you're in, quote-unquote, "in a courtroom," I must apologize. We at City Council are most concerned in protecting the life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness of our electorate. And I want to thank you for your time in creating a visual presentation for our consumers, our residents, and the viewership that take this place in real time. They're watching right now. And Mr. Dunn and Mr. Rawlings, your time here has been invested wisely in educating all of us here in how our decisions will either facilitate or hinder your continual business in this medium-sized city of Victorville. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So at this time, I will reopen the public hearing and I will call on anyone who has submitted a speaker card. And there will be a two-minute time limit. Steve Rawlings is the first card that I have. Second one will be Pete Moreno.
Steve Rawlings, I believe, is the representative that just spoke, so...
Oh, that's right, correct. Pete Moreno. And after Pete, Brett Nottingham.
Thank you. Respectful, respectful members of the day is. My name is Pete Moreno, resident of Victorville since 2009. My request will be brief and succinct. Regarding resolution number nineteen zero zero one and ordinance number two-three-eight-seven that are before you regarding the sale of alcohol at the theater operations at the Mall of Victorville, may I respectfully recommend a no vote on the matter as it is not conducive to the mall clients. Thank you for your courtesy.
Brett Nottingham. Could I ask for us to please hold the applause until after everyone has had an opportunity to speak, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm a thirty-six-year member of the High Desert. I've lived up here for thirty-six years. We just moved to Victorville about two years ago. We used to live in Asperia. And we've always respected Victorville for the way they ran their city, for what they've done, for how they've done it. And that's one of the reasons why we moved to Victorville. So obviously, I'm here because I want to voice my opinion. And I don't have a fancy speech. I don't have a bunch of numbers, but I do have some bullet points I want to go over that I would like to give to you for you to think about on your decision-making process. Anyone who's raised a child or been a child knows what alcohol does. Whether it's one drink, three drinks, it doesn't matter. If, if, if we want to be responsible as adults to provide an atmosphere for children that's non-conducive, that, that is not productive, that is not normal, let's say, because we, we raise our families not to drink, not to do drugs. So if we want to provide an atmosphere for financial gain, for the comforts of, of going to a public place to do what you want to do, I don't think that's a wise, moral, ethical decision to make. I really don't. One drink leads to another drink. How would you not know if someone's not drunk before they got there and they drank three more drinks? What does alcohol do? Where did, I mean, as, as a city council member, i- if you let alcohol go into the mall or go into any place that, that you all are responsible for, what's next?
It's been two minutes.
What's after alcohol? I mean, it just goes on and on and on. So why would we want to compromise everything that we've stood for?
I'm sorry, sir. You're twenty-seven.
Okay. Well, that, thank you very much, Council.
Teresa Rogers. And after Teresa will be Don Quay.
Hello. I want to say thank you to the council members and the mayor and everyone for your time, for taking the time to hear us and to, you know, entertain our opinions. And I want to say thank you to the community for coming out. But I also want to say, this is very dear to me. I've been up here in the High Desert for ten years and we've had a lot of transitions. I understand trying to enhance the experience at the mall, but at what cost? Because we can enhance it for the adults, but what are we doing for the children? If you can take yourself back or imagine a child in a movie theater, excited about the visit, wanting to see whatever Disney movie is out, and in the midst of your experience, you see a, a person, an irate person because they can't handle their alcohol, that can be traumatizing. Also want to bring to your attention, how many accidents, and we have a lot of them up here, that end in death are caused because the person does not recognize that they have had one drink too many. This, it concerns me because I live in this community. My children live in this community. And we're not looking, as a community, we're not looking at...
You have thirty seconds?
Thirty seconds? Okay. We're not looking at the experience. I understand you want to enhance the experience, but I'm also having a heartfelt moment about all involved. Again, this movie theater is adjacent to the mall. You can come out of the mall and go into, out of the movie theater, go into the mall. We have a lot of people that drink and, and do whatever else they want to do, but they cannot handle their extracurricular activity.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much. I think I was heard.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
And after Don, Marilyn Oleksak.
Good evening. Appreciate Cinemark's commitment to requiring their employees to complete responsible beverage service training and their commitment to following ABC standards. However, in this unique situation at the movie mall theater, additional steps need to be taken to ensure public safety. For example, allowing one patron to purchase two alcoholic beverages per transaction is not a good idea. Despite their best intentions, Cinemark cannot guarantee that the purchaser wouldn't be able to pass a second beer off to another, an underage individual once inside the auditorium. Patrolling the theater once every thirty minutes is not enough to keep this from happening. If you want a drink for yourself and your spouse or friend want one, that person should be present and show an ID when the drink is purchased with a one-drink maximum if this municipal code amendment is passed. And the last month's argument of a Cinemark's employee standing in the theater till a daylight explosion happens in the film so that they can see what is going on in the auditorium is ridiculous. Why does alcohol have to be allowed at all showings? Is it really necessary at ten AM during matinee at G and PG-rated movies or during any showing? If only a Cinemark states ten percent of patrons or two-hundred-and-thirty-two out of a thousand, which is twenty-three percent, purchase one alcoholic beverage and only ten percent of those purchase a second drink, want to have a one-drink limit. I think the one-drink in a theater frequented by so many young people is a bad idea. Offering even one opens the door to the loosening of codes in the future. Something else to point out is that it's just, that just because Cinemark is not reporting any issues tied to their alcohol sales, does not mean that the community has not witnessed any issues. They just chose to hire weakened armed guard. Please consider the liability and litigation if someone turns out to be underage and was served in Cinemark and has an accident. Oh, and this Cinemark comment last month in the, in the parking lot where our neighbors and friends are, "We need to remain competitive and need this income stream to remain so. But at the same time, we'll not just invest hundreds of thousands of dollars, but millions of dollars in improvement."
Your time is up.
Cinemark does not need this alcohol income stream. We need a safe place for our children, youth, and families. Simple choice. No.
Marilyn Oleksak. I got it right? Good, finally. And Nicholas Sandoval will be next.
Okay, so I think this, my name is Marilyn Oleksak. I'm with Forerunner International. I lived in the High Desert for about a year and a half now. The sale of alcohol is lowering the bar. And I want to excuse that play on words, but it is lowering the bar. Alcohol does not belong in movie theaters. It's compromise, pure and simple. Alcohol belongs in a bar or at home. I know it seems like Cinemark has all the bases covered for making sure that nothing happens. But the bottom line is, I think, it's the dollar sign. There's no shelf life for, for beer or wine. And there is shelf life for food and, and ice cream and all those types of things. So it, it has to do to me with compromise or what is morally right. Compromise, which is, brings on the dollar sign, and what is morally right, which may not bring on the dollar sign, but may bring on other things which are a lot more reputable. I want to submit to all of you that you probably have been in a situation where you've compromised on something in your life and you've noticed ramifications that might have been not that great. Compromise always starts small, but the ramifications of compromise...
You have thirty seconds?
Which seem really small or a lot larger. So I want to also submit to you, take yourself back fifty years. Some of you can do that. When our country had more respect for law, more respect for order, and more respect for authority, and there was less violence. And a lot of things have happened in this country to bring about some of these things. But I want to submit to you, could one of these things have been compromise? And I'll leave you with that to ponder. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Sandoval. And after Nicholas, Josephine Arias Roman.
Good evening. I'm here to speak. William Shakespeare said, "To be or not to be." We also, and take that to mind, that we have the ultimate decision to make, to be a good example and to make the right decisions, or to be a bad example and make wrong decisions. And that being said, the sale of alcohol at a movie theater, I don't see, it's a business. It's this, this economic city, economy city that we have in Victorville is not where it should be. And it could be up to par. If we are worried about where our kids are going to be because of the selling of alcohol and at, at a movie theater, then I think the city should look at making recreation centers more available at parks and imply basketball courts, pool tables, and give kids other alternatives to hang out. Because a movie theater is not just a teenage hangout or for kids to hang out. It's for family entertainment. And I just want to throw in the peace of mind that if the big uproar is about alcohol being sold at a movie theaters, then everyone needs to stop going everywhere because fast-food restaurants have it, Disneyland has it, amusement parks have it, baseball parks have it, football games have it, and you still take your children there. They're still exposed to it. Liquor stores, grocery stores, they're exposed, they're exposed to cigarettes, which is, causes cancer. It's been a proven fact. And a lot of people are dying from cancer. That's the number one cause in deaths nowadays. So, I mean, if we want this city to strive...
You have thirty seconds?
...we need more businesses to come in. And we need the businesses that we have to stay and be more competitive so that way we can make a brighter future for these youth people and give them recreation places to go. Give them other options to hang out instead of being at one location at a mall. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Jo, Joceline Arias. And then Alavan King will be next.
Hello. My name is Joceline Arias Roman. I've been living here for fifteen years now with my mom. I don't feel like it's comfortable for me to be here at the Victor Valley Mall and then going to the movie theaters and then have, knowing that people around me are drinking. I've been there before with my dad. He's that type of guy. And I know that it's not safe for other children that are there with their parents and knowing that their parents could be drinking wine or beer there too. Thank you.
After Alavan King, Vida Talis.
Greetings, Maria, I mean, Mayor Gloria, and the rest of the council members. I attended a local religious establishment called Forward Ministries International, and I'm on the eve... and I'm on the evangelism team at my church. And one of the most popular prayer requests that I encounter on the evangelism team when we're out in the field is for family. And a lot of the prayer requests that we get for families is in regards to domestic violence within the families. And the catalyst for this is usually due to drug and alcohol abuse. I heard the gentleman express that it would be a luxury amenity, but by what standard? Anytime that you have to up security, anytime that you have to up precautions, it's usually because you're upping the risk. And I just really believe that it's unnecessary to, to bring, to introduce alcohol into a city that I don't feel is ready for that kind of a responsibility. I feel that it's not the direction that we should be going into. I feel that this city still needs a lot of healing and a lot of restoration, and I don't think that this is a direction that we should be going into in regards to this city as a whole. Thank you.
Vida Talis, and after Vida, Pastor Carol Polly.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here, and thank you, all the members. I moved here around four years ago, finding or looking at a better place to live with my children, to raise in a safe place. So for me to be in a movie theater and having next to me a person drinking is not safe for my family. Okay? So I believe everything has a place. That's why it's bars, restaurants, and other places where they can be selling this. And I understand we have choices and good examples to give to our families, correct? So, but I think this is a family place, and we need to be safe in this place. How I can trust the person who's going to be next to my daughter? I have a teenager of 15 years old. Sometimes she goes, I mean, she goes with friends, you know, to enjoy in this time to, you know, in the theater. So how I believe the person next to her will be in a good behavior. Two drinks, two drinks, three drinks, how you said, me, myself, put me like buzzed or, you know, like, maybe drunk. So I don't know if this person next to my daughter, daughter will be, you know, in bad behavior, and how they're going to control this if I'm in my house thinking about, you know, about it. So I believe this is not a good choice to do, or, you know, I don't, I don't agree with this amendment. Thank you.
Pastor Polly, and then after Pastor Polly, Santiago Lara.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Garcia and all the city councils, forgive my voice. It was necessary for me to get out of bed and be here, it's so important, the issue tonight. I am a pastor currently with Forerunner Ministries, and somebody mentioned previously that there's a lot of crying and petition for prayer because of issues in the family, and a lot of it starts with alcohol. It's so addictive. Most of the role that I do as a servant for the Lord is to, to hear people's issues and point to the word of God, and we need to raise the standard of morality. And there's so many sad things I hear, and children that are unhappy, teens that are unhappy because parents drink, and the more we offer it, make it available, the more people are going to do it. I have other concerns that once we're in the theater, people sneak Cheetos and Cokes and all kinds of things in there, and who's going to really monitor and care about our children? And it's our responsibility to raise that standard of morality and to not make it available. It's not necessary to enhance at a family place where you'd be able in the old time to just take your family and enjoy a movie time with your children. And now there, there is more risk, and so I would say there's a whole lot of us here tonight that would oppose this, and pray that the conviction of the Lord would, would say there's, that this is a false high. It's not necessary. Have a soda.
Seconds?
Okay, have a soda. There's other ways around having a fun time, and I strongly oppose this, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Santiago Lara, and after Santiago, Jose Noah Alvarado.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Gloria Garcia and council members. My name is Pastor Santiago Lara. I've been a resident of Victorville for over nine years. I'm also the president of the Hispanic Association of Ministers and Pastors of the High Desert with over 40 pastors and ministers and congregations, and I strongly oppose this. We know what alcohol does, and I don't have the time to be explaining it, but I do have an alternative. They were mentioning, Cinemark was mentioning 10%. I believe if we go and sell some good chicken wings, we could pass that 10%. It is close to the mall. It is a place where families do come together and actually share family time and a good time. I myself have, me and my wife have five children, and we've been taking them to the movie theater for over nine years. And I would, I would love to keep this place as a family-oriented place where our children could be safe. I have, I have seen many people go through different experiences with alcoholism and abuse it in different ways. The theater is a dark place. They also mentioned that you're going to have a limited sale of two to three drinks. When you're in a dark place, you could easily-
You have 30 seconds.
-pass on this to minors. You have to be careful. We already have enough places that sell alcohol, and I say if we keep this place open, family-friendly and safe, we could have a better Victorville and a better tomorrow. God bless you all.
Jose Alvarado, and after Jose Alvarado, Sandy Gaten.
Hi. My name, I am Jose Alvarado, and I just wanted to say I strongly oppose the consumption of alcohol in the, in the movie theater. For somebody that used to work as an employee in the mall of Victor Valley, I strongly disagree that because it's putting not just children and family at risk, but everyone at risk. It is not just my responsibility or the council, the body, it's everybody's responsibility to make sure that everybody's okay, because if, if a problem is a problem, whether it's small or big, and if, and if it's, and if alcohol consumption is being allowed in the movie theaters, it's not just going to be in the movie theaters, it's going to spread. And it's, it's just not, it's not morally right, and it, from somebody that used to consume alcohol, I, it's, it's just a problem. And it'll continue to be a problem if, if it's, if it's allowed. So, so just whether you have kids or a family of your own or not, or plan to have one in the future, like I do at one point, I wouldn't want that, wouldn't want that to be brought upon anybody else. I haven't been a resident of Victorville for very long, but I know, I know that that's not the direction that this community should be going towards. So please, really think about this, and I know I'm not a business person, and I know other, other, other movie, anything that's, people are trying to compete to keep up with money.
You have 30 seconds.
But I just want to be part of the solution, not the problem. So thank you so much.
Sandy Gaten, and after Sandy, Nicole Williams-Ardi.
My name is Sandy Gaten. I am a student at Alantle High School. I spoke out back in November when the planning commission first brought this issue up, and I spoke out again at the last city council meeting. A city council member told me I don't need to come back here, but this is very important to me, so here I am. This is my third time explaining that if this proposal passes, my parents will not allow me to go to the movie theaters anymore without an adult present. A lot of kids at my school are in the very same boat as me. We don't really have anywhere else to hang out in the high desert other than the mall and the movies. To be perfectly honest, we don't want, we don't understand why you would care more about a big company making a few more dollars than you would care about the teenagers who live here and have a place to go and something fun to do with their friends. Adults already have places to go to drink alcohol. Why would you want to take this place away from us? If an adult can't sit through a movie without booze, and it doesn't bother them to drink in front of kids, then we are mature enough to realize that that adult has problems and does not know how to set a good example, or else they just don't care. As our city council members, I appreciate you listening to me one last time about this, because your vote tonight will show me, will show me and my friends and all of us who are watching what you really stand for. Please don't let us down, and thank you.
Nicole Williams-Ardi, and then Mike Grabhorn.
Thank you, council members. I am back again to express my opposition to granting Cinemark theaters a CUP that would allow alcohol sales in the theater at the mall of Victor Valley. My specific concern is the location where this alcohol will be served, directly across from the arcade. I'm here to clear up some misunderstandings that were expressed by one city council member at our last meeting. The implication of doing away with every alcohol established business was not up for debate. We are not teetotalers, and we as a community are not saying we don't want alcohol out of Victorville completely. That was not what was said. A vital business community needs a diverse set of businesses, and when there are an over-concentration of risk-related businesses such as alcohol outlets, the community can expect deterioration. There has been 40 years of research, which confirms that over-concentration of risk-related businesses is directly linked to nuisance activity and violent crime, which negatively impacts the quality of life and increases emergency service costs. While adding another alcohol outlet may contribute a little to the tax base, adding another alcohol outlet does not support business diversity. According to the ABC, Victorville is already oversaturated with places to sell alcohol. The city does not need any more places to provide access to alcohol, and specifically where young people-
You have 30 seconds.
...gather. Selling alcohol at our local theater just adds another place where children are exposed to alcohol. Instead, I urge you city council to consider not selling alcohol at the Cinemark to decrease the issues as were forementioned, and I would add, add to suggest approving proposals to build up community safety, health, and focus on improving social norms. Thank you so much.
After Mike will be Kim Emmerman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I've got a lot to say. I feel kind of like Jerry Springer up here. I thought it was interesting that Mr. Dunn says he hadn't been to the mall, and I think that's probably because my references show that he's from Illinois, so I doubt he's ever been to his mall. Steve is from Marietta, so he doesn't know about Victorville, nor will either one of them ever be back here probably unless, as Mr. Rawlings mentioned, he rides in the desert. That's what he knew about Victorville. I wanted to point out that Mr. Rawlings actually, he said that he works for Cinemark, but he's actually employed by Cinemark. He runs a company called Alcohol Beverage Specialties, and his sole purpose is to travel around the country and present to city councils and to persuade you to grant liquor licenses to different places. I noticed some of the things he says I had issue with, like he showed a slide tonight showing 33 Cinemark theaters. Never once did he say every theater there served alcohol, but he wanted you to assume that, and then afterwards he said, "As you can see, it's widespread." Well, what's widespread? Yes, Cinemark's widespread. Great. Okay. He also, last time he played you really good. We had 29 people speak against this ordinance, and then he put in a public speaking card. You gave him unlimited time, and he says, "I don't know protocol." Well, he does know protocol. This is his job. His only reason for getting up there was to stop the flow of negativity against what he needs to pass.
You have 30 seconds.
On his website, he has a list of cities that he's caused, like his conquest, and if you want to put Victorville on there, you've already heard from the public. So vote what you want, but if you come up for reelection, we're going to have to take that into account. Thank you.
Kim Emmerman, and after Kim, Frank Kelly.
Good evening, city council members. I address you again in regards to the alcohol-serving beverages at the Cinemark in Victorville. If I may, I would like to draw your attention to an email that I've sent to each and every one of the council members regarding Mr. Steve Rawlings. In this email, there was a link to the website of ABS Alcohol Beverage Specialists, which Mr. Rawlings is an employee. This company touts that they specialize in the processing of alcohol-related permits. I feel very deceived by Mr. Rawlings, who has clearly misrepresented himself to our community. He is trying to mislead you by saying "we operate" or "in our theaters." He is a paid lobbyist, not an employee of Cinemark. He is an educated man, as stated by his online bio, and knows the difference between language structure. He is a paid lobbyist. He would also know that he should be, he should not be representing himself. He does not live in this area. He has clearly disclosed that he only comes here as a visitor. Maybe Mr. Rawlings should pay a little bit more attention to his job, as he doesn't seem to be very familiar with all the points. At his last meeting, you all asked him questions regarding blood and alcohol or crime, and he simply would state, "I don't know. I don't have that information. My colleague would be better at providing this information," et cetera. Who is this other colleague? Yet another con man trained to pass something that is not beneficial to our community? Or is it simply just part of his con to misrepresent the project-
You have 30 seconds.
...and only provide the selling points that he threats business closure and need, and his need to compete? He has already stated he is unfamiliar with our culture, so he clearly cannot speak as to what it is beneficial to our community. Please don't be fooled by his sleight of hand, and you all live in this community and are aware of the facts that have presented to you. Please do not pass this measure. Thank you.
Frank Kelly, and after Frank, Maggie Martin.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Frank Kelly, and I stand before you this evening along with my grandson. And I too kept hearing the luxury item as far as talking about kids, but this, I want to do this quickly. I had to rewrite this whole thing since I only got two minutes, so let me just read it real fast, okay? Young people are often disproportionately affected by the laws and policies regarding alcohol. Our governments are now getting into the drug market that was once ran by criminals and gangs. Enough is enough. It's time to support a common sense plan to take control, take back control of alcohol and drug use for health and for safety reasons. Our broken alcohol and drug policies are hurting our young people. Young people are getting drugs and alcohol more easily. Alcohol is, it seems, is being sold everywhere. Despite the fact that drug dealers are being caught every day, the government is still permitting a new kind of retail drug dealer to take their place on Main Street. It's our civic responsibility to fix this. It's time to get alcohol and other drugs under control by putting common sense approaches in place, because quite simply, the other side lies when it comes to protecting our children. Let's take back control with safer, saner regulations and policies. Young people-
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. Do you think there may be focusing more on the risk and the dangers of drugs and alcohol, it would be more effective way to engage our young people about the use of alcohol and drugs such as underage drinking marijuana and prescription drug use? Research have found a short-term exposure for young people to alcohol and alcohol advertising is associated with positive thoughts of alcohol and greater alcohol consumption. Let's just not say yes-
Your time is up.
...to more outlets that put these harmful substances in our communities, but let's say yes to more smarter solutions, or we'll all pay the price.
Thank you. Maggie Martin, after Maggie, Maggie Robert Ward.
I don't even need to have a written statement prepared to respond to this ludicrous, insane, Whether our more liberal friends like it or not, Victorville is a conservative community. Yes, us whole people still have some control, and we have a say in what goes on in this city. I was, I didn't make the meeting on the 15th, but I listened to it the next day, and the gentleman that was- And the gentleman that was speaking from Cinemark, I have never been so insulted in my entire life, sixty-two years, insulted by this man coming up here and trying to blow smoke up my skirt, right here, and the rest of this city as well. It doesn't matter how you package BS. You put a nice ribbon on it and some nice wrap inside, it's still BS. It's still trash. It's still garbage. My, I just can't stress it. I was livid when I saw this man speaking, and then the both of these two gentlemen, tonight. It's insulting to any thinking person for them to even say that. I don't even think they believe their own BS. It's, they're doing, it's their job, but honest to God, if they had children, they wouldn't be up here saying that unless they were getting paid lots of bucks. So I'm gonna make a couple of quick ones here. This ain't our first time in rodeo here, rodeo guys. Okay. Prevent, prevent, they said, prevent intoxication. Couple beers, three beers? Let me tell you, you need to do some research. One beer, you're buzzed, you're high, and those boys over there are gonna show you the county jail, and I wanna show them the county line. I'll give them a personal escort.
Your time is up.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Robert Ward, and after Robert Ward, Robert Arvizo.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I've only been here a couple of years in this area. I spent most of my life in the military. I wouldn't trust a soldier next to me anywhere with alcohol for a half a second. I didn't serve, I served in the US military, but also served in the French Foreign Legion. And I can tell you by practical experience, I'd shoot you in the back if I couldn't trust you, because my life depended on the people I worked with. If I couldn't trust you because you were drunk, you had alcohol in your system, you had better look out. It's the way I feel about children being exposed to something that they don't need. I've gone to the theater. It's dark. Come on. I was twenty-one. I was eighteen. All of us have been young. We've been stupid, and we've done some crazy things when we were young. Some of us more so than others. But at the same time, don't tell me that the mind doesn't travel when you got a beer in your belly. And a man with a beer or two, looking over in the dark, seeing some young hot chickie, come on, our brains don't have to go that far. You're just exposing people to something that you wanna deny is gonna exist. I say vote no and vote no now, because you don't know what the future is. And exposing young children to something they don't absolutely need-
You have thirty seconds.
Facts and figures, facts and figures, business junk is junk. I can, you know, if I took the time, if I had the time to sit down and go and play with the numbers and everything else, I can make sense of anything. You don't need numbers to make sense. You're adults. You have children. You know that you don't want them exposed to it. Why have the community exposed to it? I say no. Thank you.
Robert Arvizo, and after Robert, Valentin Godina.
City Council, Robert Arvizo, concerned citizen. I think that we all agree that on an average, people who will purchase drinks at the theater will not walk out extremely intoxicated. However, they will walk out above the legal limit. For example, a female who weighs a hundred and twenty-five pounds and drinks three twelve-ounce beers at seven-point-five percent alcohol per volume will have a blood alcohol level of point-one-four-nine percent. Two hours after ingestion came 2018 for reference. This is above the legal limit to drive nearly twice as much as the legal limit. This specific person would have to wait six hours so that her blood alcohol level is back to, down to point-zero-eight percent, the legal limit. She has to wait six hours to reach the legal limit, not a two-hour movie. It is illegal to be drunk or above the legal limit in public. It is illegal to drive above the legal limit. Why would the city of Victorville consider endorsing the idea of people leaving the theater above the legal limit and breaking the law? Alcohol has been listed, or alcohol has been linked to the increase of crime, harassment, and nuisance activity. Our sheriff-
You have thirty seconds.
Has identified the Victor Valley Mall as a crime hotspot. Alcohol will only exuberate the current crime rate instead of addressing the issue. Why are some city officials considering to add to an existing problem instead of fixing it? I ask that you respectfully consider the safety, health, and desires of your community, community members who are, who you are representing.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Valentin Godina, after Valentin Godina, Alejandra Diaz.
Good afternoon, city of Victorville. Alcohol in our theater is totally unacceptable. Consider instead having alcohol here at the city council along with popcorn, because some of the stuff that happens up here is very entertaining, and a good popcorn and a good beer would really be helpful. Twenty-twenty is just around the corner. Let's keep that in mind, because some of these kids will be voting. Thank you.
Alejandra Diaz, and after Alejandra Diaz, Ramiro Rodriguez. Is he here? No. Ramiro Rodriguez.
Good afternoon, good evening to everyone. Just a general, general notice to everybody. Remember, when you go to a store, or a restaurant, or a movie theater, they do put up that white sign on the door that says, "Applicant for beer license." It was there for many months. We should've all seen it and not wait to the very last moment. Right now, we're trying to put on our socks after we put on our shoes. We have plenty ample time. There's, I know that it's, it's not a good place to sell beer, but the thing is, they're competing. And if they lose it, the people just go to Jess Ranch or Hesperia to enjoy the movie theaters, and the competition is very great. I think more than anything else, this falls on the parents, the rearing of their children, because there's beer everywhere. You go to Chuck E. Cheese. You go to, after a baseball game, little league game, you go to Round Table Pizza, Incredible John's. Beer's sold everywhere. The Super Bowl this last Sunday was full of beer and full of kids. It's a permit. It's not law. So if the citizens really don't want it, they can get together and pull their resources and have it revoked. If they abuse it, if the law's not followed. Not Cinemark's fault. It's the vendors, the people that sell to minors. If somebody sells a pack of cigarettes to a little kid, they're not gonna sue Marlboro. They're gonna sue the person that sold it. So the community is getting together.
You have thirty seconds.
Like I said, this, and also, last meeting, they said the city has nothing to win from this, this permit. Yes, they do. Thirty-two percent of revenue for the city's property taxes, thirty-three sales taxes plus permits. So there is a lot to win in the city for this permit being approved. And the thing is, it's business, and you gotta see it that way, but I see, I see everything on the parents. Should monitor your children. Thank you very much.
Dylan, and I cannot make out the last name. After Dylan, A.J. O'Connell.
City Council, just wanna acknowledge this issue tonight. I'm someone who has overcome addiction, and I know not, not everyone out there has overcome that spirit, because I admonish and I, and I exhort you guys to recognize that it is a spirit. So you've got someone who might wanna go to the movie theater and enjoy a time and innocence and walk in, and then there's alcohol, and, and they haven't overcome that, that temptation yet. You get three beers and that person, I'm sorry, but they're a loose cannon. So I just wanna exhort you guys and, and, and to, to, to say no to this. Not only that, I believe that God wants to bring revival to California, and that revival could start with our obedience right here in Victorville. Thank you, guys.
A.J. O'Connell, and after O'Connell, Myrna Velasco.
A.J. O'Connell, Victorville, California. Mayor and city council. I was not intending to speak tonight, but I feel that I need to after hearing the comments from the public, and that there needs to be a critical level of thinking in support of the applicant's proposal to establish alcohol use at the movie theater. I believe that the applicant has put in reasonable security measures for a type forty-seven ABC license in comparison to the other more intense licenses that are within the census tract that have already been approved from ABC and from this city council. I believe it's important that this city council also make a show of support of business. Cinemark employs a lot of our local residents. A lot of them are young. We need to do stuff within our city that is going to keep our youth within our city, and giving them jobs is a wonderful place to start. I think it's also important to recognize that in your, that in your packet, you do have a support letter from police department and from ABC as well. The own, your own police department is supporting this measure. They believe that they have the resources and the enforcement to be able to mitigate any sort of negative measures that may come about from this. Finally, if you've gone to a movie theater, it is very expensive to buy concessions. If somebody wants to go and get hammered, there are a lot of cheaper places to go than a movie theater. Thank you.
Myrna Velasco, and after Myrna, Rafael Porras.
I'm kinda short here. Good evening, city council. Hi, Gloria. Hello, city of Victorville. As an entertainer, being on radio, television, and movies, I know how crazy people get watching our movies, but he mentioned that at Chuck E. Cheese, at ballparks, where there, there's lit places. This is, this is a place where we have a lot of child molesters. As a mother of eight kids, we gotta be careful when it's dark. What happens to, what happened to our family members of ours? People have got molested. And now you're gonna, look, people don't care how much alcohol costs. They're gonna be having fun. They're gonna be going in, they're sitting next to children, going into bathrooms. It's very dangerous. Why did we close Blue Parrot? Old guess. Even we converted one of our, one of our nightclubs out here into a church. What happened? Killings after alcohol. It's just very dangerous, putting that, that combination in the dark, sitting area, and with children. Thank you.
Rafael Porras, and after Rafael, I did get one other card. Juanita, request.
Good evening, city council. My name is Rafael Porras. Our people speak loud and clear today. Ninety percent of the people here is against to approve the license to the movie theater. I pray to our heavenly Father, to they give you wisdom to this decision. This is important decision for our city. Twenty-twenty around the corner, election day. See, we'll have to clean the house again with cleaner again. Have a good night.
Juanita, request.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia, and council members. I wanna read here a report from crimemapping.com. It says, "Surrounding the theater that sells alcohol in Apple Valley, there have been fifty alcohol-related violations, as well as DUIs just within the last six months. In Hesperia, there has been a hundred and twenty-two alcohol-related violations and DUIs within the last, last six months. If you compare a quarterly crime map of the area near the Cinemark Theater in Victorville Mall, and compare it to the area near the Civic Plaza, twelve theater in Hesperia, crime occurs two-point-five times more frequently in the area where a movie theater serves alcohol. Adding more alcohol in our movie theater in a city that already has alcohol outlets, ABC recommends would only contribute to more issues and blight. So I recommend that they put in a coffee bar if they want the older population, if they want to serve, and I say a no on this."
Those are all the cards that I, that I had. So at this time, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask our city clerk to please read the title of ordinance number twenty-three eighty-seven.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville, amending Title sixteen of the Victorville Municipal Code to conditionally allow movie theaters to sell beer and wine for onsite consumption with an environmental exemption.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion in a second to introduce and waive further reading of the ordinance.
I make a motion to deny the code change, the conditional use permit, and any further reading of the ordinance twenty-three eighty-seven.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further discussion?
Yes, please, Madam Mayor. All right, we've heard a lot from audience members, both tonight and the last time this hearing was before us. Again, I'd like to thank Mr. Rawlings and Mr. Dunn for being present here with us, and for the, those that took the time to send us emails regarding their views on this matter. I generally support, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak quickly here, because we have restrictions on time, too, so I generally support business endeavors if they meet code requirements, and they're generally complementary to our values here in the high desert. And that's, that's what's important to me, i- is improving the quality of life here, not just for the next few years, but in the next twenty years and beyond. But I'd like to develop one point further. A lot of, a lot of the comments made here were very well taken by me, and, and by the way, by the applicants as well. Businesses are in business to make a profit. These gentlemen are not awful human beings. They are doing business. And as far as I can see, they've done everything within their power to make sure that had this gone forward, that our residents would have been protected. I just happen to disagree with the prospect. So there's one thing that, that hasn't really, that I haven't heard yet, and we have a former trustee with the Adelanto Elementary School District here in the audience, and I'm surprised to see her. Teresa Rogers came up in smoke, and she'll, she'll be able to attest to what I'm about to say. And we have two school districts in our community, and in the Adelanto Elementary School District alone, there are a reported six hundred students that are homeless or in foster care. And that number is thought to be very conservatives, conservative, because they're not mandated reporting groups. Those students, and we also have a lot of students that come from very troubled families, parents that are absent, or parents that are abusive. Now, can you imagine these kids sitting in a theater elbow-to-elbow with someone that's drinking alcohol, when for them, even the smell of alcohol, or the way someone smirks or laughs, could trigger the very things that have caused so many issues in their family? Are they going to sit there and think, "Oh, my goodness, is this going to happen again?" Or it brings back memories? Now, I'm not suggesting in any way that our city should make accommodations left and right such that we, we should live in a utopian city. That's not possible. That's not realistic. But I do think that we ought not to make decisions that make it more difficult for parents to parent and teachers to teach. It's been once said that what's common often leads to becoming accepted, and what becomes accepted becomes normal. I really am not looking for this to be the new normal in our community. I do believe that Cinemark is a great organization. My family goes there at least once a week. It's a great place to have family fun. It's a great time to connect with friends. But I wanna make sure that we're doing what's right for our community for the next twenty years and beyond. So I certainly will be voting no on this. Thank you.
Yes, I second it.
Do you have any discussion?
The only thing I need to say about this is that as a city council member, we are responsible for the residents of all ages, from the young to the very old. And I can see- And I can see the question of business, but not at the cost of life. Because if one child is affected by this sale, then we who have decided this decision can be held accountable. And I say to you that this is the responsibility of parents, not of the city council.
Yes, Madam Mayor. First of all, this, I was surprised the way this came to the city council. There's this conditional use permit that's been granted, but the ordinance doesn't allow it. So if the city council amends the ordinance, the CUP is automatically approved. When I read the ordinance, having sixteen-ounce drinks, and three of them can be served, is forty-eight ounces. I know people who drank, and I don't know anyone who can drink forty-eight ounces of beer in less than two hours and not be intoxicated, so I found that as a problem. I also found it a problem that an individual could buy two at a time. I also found it a problem that they're not going to have someone, I don't know that it needs to be an armed guard, at the door to prohibit anyone from leaving this theater. And so I found that this ordinance was faulty. As far as personally, I could not approve this. I'm not against the sale of beer and wine, because they have it where they have food. I'm not for closing Chuck E. Cheese. I'm not for closing those things. But if you listen to the arguments, it sounds like that if anybody consumes alcohol, they're a bad person. That's just not the case. But the facts and the statistics are there to make sure that if this council changes this ordinance, as they put conditions on there to ensure the health, safety, and welfare. What I'm saying is it should have come to the city council first, whether or not they wanted to consider the change of the ordinance, and then if it was not approved, that's the end of it. If a change was approved, then it goes to the Planning Commission. I did go to the theater today. I didn't know. I mean, there was twelve theaters out there? That's a lot. But the way this ordinance is drafted, that's why I asked the question, where did the ideas come from? I could not, under any conditions, vote for this ordinance, although I'm not a purist. I'm not out on some kind of a trip to make sure that everybody quits drinking. Adults are adults. They have to make the decision themselves. And I really agree with the comments in regard to this is a parental problem. This is an adult problem. I was at a restaurant. There was family, people just like you. The kids were there. Mom and dad was imbibing in beer and wine. Nothing happened that was bad. So there's a lot of assumptions, a lot of information. A lot of things were made, especially the people who got nasty, and so if you vote for this, we're going to take care of you. That doesn't get anything done. That just divides a community. But this council is responsible for making sure that we look after everyone, including the business people. And business people who pay the money for a conditional use permit have every right to come before the Planning Commission, the city council, and be heard in the entirety. And then, all the people who are for or against, have the right to be heard. We should not be making a decision until we hear from everyone. And I think I have done that, that that's what I'm required to do. But this ordinance, as it's drafted, is unacceptable to me.
Ms. Gomez?
Well, I'm all for business and progress in our city. But when it comes to the safety of the children, that's a different story. It's very difficult for me to express at this time what can happen to a child. I'm living through the pain of losing my granddaughter to a crime. Therefore, I don't feel that the city needs to approve something that could possibly create a problem for even one child. Even though I'm all for business and progress, but this just doesn't fit into the pain that I'm going through. It just does not allow me to approve it. Thank you.
I have a motion to deny by Mayor Protem Ramirez, and seconded by Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes with councilmember... Motion's denied, with councilmember voting no.
The motion actually passed because it was a motion to deny.
Sorry about that.
The effect was that it's denied.
The motion is denied.
It's denied.
Okay, we move on. We still have a full agenda here. So we will be moving on to item B two. "A public hearing to hear arguments for and against the revisions of certain portions of Titles Three, Thirteen, and Sixteen of the Victorville Municipal Code Designating Title Eight of Said Code as Fire, Creating New Chapters in Title Eight to Memorialize the Establishment of the City of Victorville Fire Department, Adopting a New Fire Code for the City and Consolidating Fire Department Functions, Powers, and Duties." Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council open and conduct the public hearing, close the public hearing, and introduce ordinance number twenty-three eighty-three for adoption, and first reading by title only, and to approve a few minor revisions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from councilmembers of staff at this time? I will start with Ms. Gomez.
No questions?
I have no questions at this time.
Mayor Protem?
I second it.
No, do you have any questions?
No, oh, no.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I have no questions.
At this time, I opened the public hearing, and I do not have any cards. Therefore, I close the public hearing. And I ask our city clerk, please read the title of ordinance number twenty-three eighty-three.
"An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville, revising certain portions of Titles Three, Thirteen, and Sixteen of the Victorville Municipal Code Designating Title Eight of Said Code as Fire, and creating new chapters in Said Title Eight to memorialize the establishment of the City of Victorville Fire Department, Adopt a New Fire Code for the City, and consolidate Fire Department Functions, Powers, and Duties therein."
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion in a second to introduce and waive further reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the council take action to in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that the council take action in accordance with the recommendation posted on the agenda.
Is that your motion?
Specifically, point three, yes.
Oh, okay. I need a sec.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar items numbers, C one through C eight, can be approved with one motion unless a councilmember requests an item to be pulled for further discussion?
Yes, if I may, I would like to request pulling two items from the consent calendar, C three and C eight, for comment, and then pass with one motion the other consent calendars, those being C one, C two, and C four through C seven.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
For item C three, approval of the police station flooring replacement project is what I'm going to comment on. This is a notice of completion, and I'd like to have a tour to look at the expenses at the police station regarding the replacement of the flooring. So Captain Besseger and the city manager, if you would please work towards making this happening sooner than later. You have my information, seven sixty-nine, twelve, thirty-one, ninety is my number. Give me the available times and dates. I would greatly appreciate that. For item C eight, which is a notice of completion for storm drain improvements on Seneca and Hispania Road Project. For this one, I'd like more detailed information in writing about that cache for grass, cache for grass, such as why the particular structures were selected, and how the process came about, and who the key players were involved, and what the meaning of this type of material was chosen, probably rather than a less rustic one. Please, for staff and the city manager, I will await your responses to an email and a hard copy in my inbox. Thank you for your promptness in this request. And then with one motion, I would like to motion items C one, C two, and C four through C seven to pass, or...
We already did that. It would be a motion for just C three and C eight.
Okay, so then I make a motion to approve C three and C eight.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Now we move on to written communications. Item D one, annual financial reports from fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council and board of directors receive and file the following: City of Victorville Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the Fiscal Year Ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen; Independent Auditors Report, Section Two Six Five, Recommendation Letter, Yellow Book Opinion for the Fiscal Year Ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen; Victorville Water District Basic Financial Statements for the Fiscal Year Ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen; Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Basic Financial Statements for the Fiscal Year Ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen; and City of Victorville Single Audit Report on Federal Awards for the Fiscal Year Ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the action that's before the council is simply receive and file. I have looked at this, and this is going to be one of my resource documents for the budget. We're coming up for the budget session. And so my suggestion is, is that staff be aware that probably more than just me will have questions and be utilizing this. And my motion, with that understanding that this will be discussed later separately, and as a part of the budget, I move that we just receive and file the document at this time. Sorry, didn't mean to get in front of the person who presented this.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may, give a little bit of introduction. Before you tonight, we have Jennifer Farr with Davis Farr LLP. They are our auditors who perform the audit, beginning with work that began roughly after the close of the fiscal year in July through the time of completion. There's quite a few folks on staff that put in a lot of effort to get to this point of being able to present these financials, and I'd like to thank them, namely, the finance staff and the folks, the various folks throughout the city that assisted when questions were needed to be responded to. But with that, Jennifer Farr has a short presentation to kind of just go over the results of the audit findings, and can be available along with myself and staff to answer any questions that you may have after the presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Thanks for having me here tonight. I will keep my comments brief, and I have a short PowerPoint presentation to go through the results of the audit. So we have completed the audit for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. And what you see in front of you is the list of the reports that we issued, the most significant report being the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Our audit opinion on the financial report is an unmodified audit opinion that was dated January twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. That's the highest level of audit opinion that you can receive. I wanted to point out that in that opinion, there's an emphasis of a matter paragraph that alerts the reader about things that are unusual or different about your financial statements. So it lets you know that there was implementation of a new accounting standard related to the other post-employment benefit obligations this year, and also comments on some of the deficit unrestricted net position and some of the losses in the airport that I'll talk briefly about towards the end. Just a couple of slides on the financial data itself. This is all funds combined, the revenues of the organization of the city, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and seventeen comparison. I'll just point out that the total revenues were about a hundred and ninety-eight million, compared to about a hundred and ninety-six million in the prior year. So very similar. They did improve, and it was primarily due to improvements in property tax increment from the prior year. On the expense side, if you look at all of the expenses combined for all of the funds of the city, the expenses increased by about eleven million dollars to a two-hundred-and-fifteen-million-four-hundred-and-seventy-five total expenses in two thousand and eighteen. Those increases were primarily due to increases in public safety costs, increases in pension costs, and also legal fees incurred during the year. And you can see that the total loss for the city, all funds combined, is about seventeen million dollars in the current year, June thirtieth, eighteen. The most important fund of the city is probably the general fund. It's your main operating fund. And for the general fund, the general fund performed better than expected, or better than budgeted. The total revenues of almost sixty million were under budget, but they were also four million dollars higher than last year's revenues, and that's due to increases in property tax revenue, and also increases in building permit revenue. The total expenditures of fifty-eight million remained within the budget that the council approved. In total, the general fund's equity increased by one-point-three million from the prior year, which brings the ending fund balance up to six-point-six million, which now exceeds ten percent of the operating budget of the city. So there's been substantial improvement in the financial health of the general fund. Last thing I wanted to mention is that, in accordance with government auditing standards, we perform certain tests of compliance with laws and regulations. So we test compliance with federal grants, compliance with your investment policies, and compliance with your purchasing policy. And I'm happy to report that we did not note any non-compliance with that testing. In our other letter of internal control recommendations, we have two items to report to you. One of them is audit adjustments detected during the audit, which is required to be reported under auditing standards. And the second is an ongoing comment that we've had regarding the financial health of the airport and the default on the bond payments. However, I'm happy to report that as of December two thousand and eighteen, there's no longer any defaults on the bond payments. And that's the first time I've seen that since I've been your auditor for a few years now. And lastly, I wanted to mention that this is my last year to present your audit to you, so thank you for giving me an opportunity to do so. As part of the state's mandatory auditor rotation, next year you'll have a new audit firm. And I wanted to thank staff for all of the time that they spend preparing for the audit. And I wanted to thank the city council for the professionalism that you've shown me over the years. So thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, I have questions for you. So you just discussed the general fund that was higher by four percent, which you prefaced it with "happy," so there's a connotation that that's obviously good. However, prior to that, you had said something about the funds that were at last at seventeen million... However, prior to that, you had said something about the funds that were at last at $17 million, but you didn't preface that with a connotation, it was just very neutralized. And for a loss to be $17 million, in my understanding, is a very stark thing, and I want to color that because I don't want the community to take the impression that it's all happy. And I can start to see how you piecemealed it, but can you put it together? Or you must report separately, I just want to understand how you were categorizing that.
Might ask, let the deputy city manager answer that question instead. There are, the financial statements are required to be presented in a certain way, and so you do have different reports that present different information. But that's a much bigger question that you just asked.
Okay, well, I appreciate your response. That solidifies what I already perceived the response would be, and I'll get back to them. I just have other questions before they desire to answer that. The other thing is, how is the internal control testing then, that you called it successful? In other words, I'm under the impression, based on my prior conversations, that to be able to pull a success, you have to poll or sample. You don't directly do everything, I know manpower hours and the amounts of cost would not be conceivable in this manner. But of course, you're the expert, I'm not, so I'm asking for clarification.
Correct. Under the auditing standards, it is not uncommon for the auditors to sample transactions. As you mentioned, it would be cost prohibitive to look at every transaction. So as a result of the sampling that we performed, we did not identify any instances of non-compliance that were required to be reported to you.
And then on that question, who selects that sampling? Is there a random number chaser, or do you just go by line? What is that?
We follow the AICPA guidance on sampling, which is generally followed by most CPA firms, American Institute of Certified Public Accountants.
Got it. And then you said something about a new audit firm? I'm assuming that we're going to do another quote? I don't know, you're shaking your heads, nodding yes? How long were you with us, eight years? And is that the case that we're going to rebid, and then you're possibly going to put for a rebid? Or how's that going to function?
As your, as an audit partner, I'm only allowed to work on your assignment for six years. And so I am actually precluded from bidding on the engagement in the future.
I can answer. So the procurement department issued a request for proposals back in probably, I want to say, August of 2018. We received responses, and those interviews for the new firms are actually taking place this week.
And I don't know if the city manager was going to respond, or that would be something?
I did want to, I did want to make a comment relating to the question you had about the 17 million, and if I can, if I might. And really for the public's benefit, I think it's important to at least address that because the number represents a multitude of different funds. And if you'll remember my budget presentation, I think we identified 82 funds or so that were responsible for managing. And so while that number will show in the aggregate, say, a $17 million negative figure, it's dealing with a lot of funds that actually operate in a way where they effectively save money, save cash for a big project, say, a capital project, whether it's a road project, a sewer project, or what have you. So the negative, you can't negative spend, there actually has to be cash. So effectively, what will happen is even though the financials will show a negative, it will rely on saved up cash, for lack of a better term, to actually make the expenditures work.
I don't have any further questions, but I do have a comment. But I'll leave it up to the mayor if we can continue with comment mixture, or if it's going to be separate.
We can leave it to the? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I think you have a motion from Councilmember Cox, I don't think we've heard a second yet.
And I'll second that. Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
Yes, so it's my experience and knowledge that the City of Victorville has an annual business that it partakes of, that takes place on a scheduled timeline. As I have perceived here in Agenda Item D1, which our audience can gracefully ask Heidi Roach, who is on my right, our city public servant, to add an email to get notification of the list if you also want to have access to the same information that staff and City Councilmember have before us. You can also get that email, just like we do. So in the same vein, the annual financial reports of the fiscal year for 2018 has five essential yet impactful money eaters into the city budget, which is $238.9 million budget. I would be remiss if I did not advocate for each annual financial reporting to be set as a standalone workshop, convening for the benefit of the public, and to continue to strive for a transparent and inclusive community by providing more open forums to our interested folk who would thoroughly enjoy and provide valuable input into the local government right here in the City of Victorville. So briefly, the City of Victorville's Comprehensive Annual Finance, the Independent Auditors Report, the Victorville Water District Basic Financial Reports, the Southern California Logistics Airport Basic Financial Statements, and the City of Victorville's Single Audit Report on Federal Awards are all impactful because of the costs of internal controls, which is consistently reported based on the management's representation concerning the finances of the city. Under management, I would dare to venture out to state that this team is compiled of our financial director Christina, our assistant deputy city manager George Harris, and other departmental staff, and an ad hoc committee of two council members, that in the past being Mayor Glaire Garcia, a bookkeeper in occupation, and a former council member Jim Kennedy, ACPA. My question here, which doesn't have to be answered at the moment, I want to know if the city has already established an ad hoc committee for 2019, or it hasn't, because it didn't come to council, or I don't recall. And one last thing, as to why the discussion in a workshop setting would be advantageous to our community and to the city council, are the implications of what's called the Post-Employment Benefit Plans, OPED liabilities, the unfunded liabilities for retiree healthcare, which is already affecting for 30 of the largest US cities that exceed $100 billion. While the deficits of public pension plans have been widely discussed among staff in various cities, much less attention has been given to the obligations of the United States' local governments to supply healthcare for the retired employees for the benefits of participation, for the benefits. And so this is why I'm advocating for the participation here locally separately, not just in one agenda item to pre-approve this. This is huge in terms of our budget and how we get docked or not. So that was my comment.
I do have one card, and it was given to me after the fact here. Ramiro Rodriguez?
Hello, Council. I thought the CPA was going to be able to answer all my questions, but reading, taking the long morning to read everything, and I read everything, but the most instructive to me was her publication and her presentation of her report where it says that there's described that the CLA has suffered recurring losses. It states here that there's losses, now she said publicly right here that no losses. And then it's also that these circumstances have significantly affected the city and raised substantial doubts about the city's ability to continue as a going concern. Also, is in my understanding that it's not really an audit. What she, what this entity does just goes over what the city gives them, but never deeply, they don't follow up to see what's behind that. Just these are the papers, add them up, and just, that's it, but that's what the city gives them. I went through and through and through, I was looking for those $19.6 million from the lawsuit from the SEC. They're not there. Also, the Mars judgment, those $2 million that went to Mars Pet Food. They're not there. And all these, you know, what Blanca's saying, I think it'd be wise if us people as citizens would ask to have some sort of, stop lowering my volume, please. If somebody would give us a small meeting, I don't know, whatever we can get together and itemize these things and see where all the money's going. They tell us one thing, and something else happens. Last week, they told us that, or told last meeting, that the city's not going to win anything from the beer sales from the permit from Cinemark. And there it is, 30% in sales tax. So the city is going to get something. But we'd like to have maybe a little session, a little group getting together. Maybe somebody, get somebody outside the city to help us overlook all these finances, because there's a lot of stuff missing that we've seen before in the meetings of money that's been paid out, and it's not in this report. And it's not the CPA's fault, because that's what the city gave the CPA. It says right there, opinions, that's all. Thank you.
That was the only card that I had on this item here.
And? I have a motion by Councilmember Cox and a second by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Would you mind repeating that motion?
It was to receive and file for the annual financial reports?
Thank you. And for legal, I would like to, if I can modify the motion, or if I can establish a new motion, I would like guidance on that, I think that's appropriate at this moment. And so what I'm seeking to do is essentially what our community has requested, not just receive and file, but actually have a workshop where we have involvement, like we did with the homeless workshop, and allow community to scrutinize a little bit more of the budgets that we have, and if they feel something is hidden, and we provide a workshop, and they're able to see that there is indeed probably nothing there, I think that's best that we do, and so I'm seeking your guidance, city attorney.
So that would be a substitute motion. Is there a second on that motion? So then we go back to the first motion.
So then, for clarification, the motion was stayed, but then it died because there was, no one else wanted to, just for clarification, is that correct?
Yeah, the substitute motion got no second, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to item D2. Request for Approval of Contract Change Orders 3, 4, and 5 for the Runway 17/35 Rehabilitation Project Phases 1A and 1B. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve contract change orders 3, 4, and 5 to the Runway 1735 Rehabilitation Project, Phases 1A and 1B, project number CC17-111, thereby increasing the amount of the construction agreement by and between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and Kaufman Specialties Incorporated by $56,593 for a new total contract amount not to exceed $12,289,483.61.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff at this time? Two-minute time limit. I will start with Mayor Protemp Ramirez. Do you have any questions? Jones?
No questions.
Gomez?
No, Mayor Garcia.
I do not have any speaker cards, therefore I need a motion and a second.
I move that the request for approval of contract change orders 3, 4, and 5 for the Runway 17/35 Rehabilitation Project Phases 1A and 1B, project number CC17-111, be approved as requested by staff.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
Yes, so I've read through the Runway Rehab Project and didn't see a map reminding council and onlookers on what specific areas are being surfaced or resurfaced and whatnot. And for staff and city manager, I'm requesting a visual map with a highlight so as to this area that is being revamped. I know it's going through several phases, if I can recall correctly. Be placed hopefully in City Council's inbox and for future to add some visualization in representing the layperson's interest in understanding some more of this project. Thank you.
Was that a question for me?
That was just a comment, so we can go ahead and proceed. There's a motion and a second, and the city clerk will be calling out the votes.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Item D3, Standard Sublease Agreement for Building 676 and portions of Building 717. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve entering into the standard sublease agreement by and between the SCLAA and the Boeing Company for Building 676 and portions of Building 717, and authorize a deputy city manager to execute said agreement.
Thank you. At this time, councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff? Starting with Ms. Gomez.
No questions.
No questions.
None, thank you.
None? Good. I, let me see, I do not have any cards for this item here. Hold on a second. No, I don't have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Protemp Ramirez. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Item D4, Purchase and Sale Agreement for Right-of-Way Acquisition for Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the purchase and sale agreement for the right-of-way acquisition for the Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project with Carmen Major, trustee of the Major Trust, dated January 31st, 1986. APN 0480-021-59.
Thank you. Councilmembers, questions of staff at this time? Start with Ms. Jones.
I have none, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Gomez?
So for clarification, this is for the city attorney. This is solemnly based on the parcel and no other aspect besides which we have discussed about the Green Tree project, is that correct?
This is correct. This is the follow-up item to prior negotiations discussed in closed sessions, and now we're bringing it for formal approval to the council.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
No questions.
I do not have any speaker cards for this item, so I need a motion and a second.
I move the recommendation, staff.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Item D5, Request to Approve the Piggyback Purchase of a Vector 2115 Plus Recycler Jet Rudder on a 2020 Kenworth 6x4 chassis. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council award hacker equipment as authorized distributor the piggyback purchase of a Vector 2115 Plus Recycler Jet Rudder on a 2020 Kenworth 6x4 chassis in the amount of $630,658.59 under the Sourcewell Formerly Nationally Joint Powers Alliance, contract number 122017-FSC, and as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2018-2019 CIP budget.
Thank you. Councilmembers, questions of staff, two-minute time limit on this item. Anyone have any questions?
Yes, I'm seeking clarification. These last two years, if I heard it's 2018 budget, we passed a lot of items with a lot of structures, but this seems to be a piggyback. So I'm going to presume that this is a piggyback purchase, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so in light of that, was this in the 2018 budget, not before? And how long has this been? I'm presuming that- I'm presuming that five years, and then we do RFQs. So I'm trying to understand that process, if this is falling within, or it's not.
Madam Mayor, and city council, I just want to make sure that we're clear that the budget fiscal year that you're speaking of is twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, which is the current budget year, and this item was included in that particular budget year, budget adoption.
Do we have any rules, regulations, or probably standards or status quo ways of looking at a piggyback? Or is it five years, and then we do RFQs?
I think, yeah, I think you're confusing the process. So RFQ would be...
Request for quotes.
That would be request for qualifications is the actual term for RFQ.
Okay, my terminology is for quotes, so I'm sorry that I didn't clarify that.
This would be a request for bids, so we would actually go out and request a bid, or if there was a more affordable option listed under one of the joint powers associations piggybacking process, then we could use that as an optional way, as an option to go through the procurement process.
Okay, so this machinery, how long have we had it contracted?
This is, this is the purchase of a Vector truck?
Right, but just the term, so maybe I, we're on two different wavelengths. So let me, let me try to understand you, but first I must let you perceive what I'm trying to state. So it's my understanding that every so often, whether it's five to ten years, we go out for bidding. But if there's no need, because there's a sole source, for instance, and I'm not assuming that this is a sole source, what we do is, we'll do a piggyback. So if you respond to how long we've had this, or if that's even applicable, I think that will clear, and you don't have to so much try to explain the process anymore.
Yeah, so you may be confusing a couple of different procurement types, and the types of purchasing that we may go through. So you're slightly confusing, like a long-term contract that we may have with a consultant that may be reconsidered after five years, with the actual purchase of a piece of equipment, which is what this particular instance is. And so they're purchasing a piece of equipment, they had an option to go out and bid, but because it is such a unique piece of equipment, as such as the description of it is pretty long, they do have an option to actually piggyback on another organization's procurement process and make sure that we're getting the same deal that another organization may have gotten, having gone through an extensive bid process. And so in essence, that's what's happening in this particular case, and they were able to secure a pretty competitive rate, from what I understand. And so this is, and I think this is a good opportunity to clarify purchasing processes we would use to secure a long-term consulting contract versus a project versus the purchase of a piece of equipment, and this falls in line in that ladder.
Thank you. If you would please provide the procurement types in my inbox, I can read through those. And you're right, I was confusing them now that you've clarified this, so I appreciate that level of understanding that you provided.
So do you have any other questions?
No, no further questions.
I do not have any speaker cards on this item. I need a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion to follow staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Item D6. Discussion and possible action regarding the city committee nominations by Councilmember Jones. Are there any questions of councilmembers at this time?
I have questions.
Of staff at this time, two-minute time limit?
Madam Mayor, if I might, this item is actually authored by Councilmember Jones, so I think first point of order would be to have the presenter actually present the item.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor and Mr. Metzler. All right, to introduce this item, it's my privilege to present to the council my nominees for the positions of the Planning Commissioner, the Community Services Advisory Committee Member, and the Legislative Review Committee Member. But before I do that, I'd like you to know more about the selection process and criteria I used for the positions. And I'm going to bullet through these pretty quickly. So my objective was to bring to the council only those nominees who are highly qualified. Had my first round of interviews been less than fruitful, I was fully prepared to fly the positions again to pursue the best for our city, but this didn't prove necessary. I conferred with City Manager Keith Metzler, Deputy City Manager Sophie Smith, City Planner Scott Webb, and Community Services Director Janelle Davidson to gain additional insight into the specialized skills, knowledge, or background most conducive to the various positions and thus to our community's best interests overall. Candidates were evaluated in three primary areas: competence, character, commitment to the betterment of our community. Regarding competence, I focused on business savvy, leadership skills, knowledge of the Brown Act, the ability to team effectively with city staff, and specialized skills or knowledge commensurate to the demands of the position sought. The interview process was uniform, rigorous, fair, and impartial. The interview formats were largely traditional with a mix of competency and behavioral-based questions. I even threw in a few quirky questions to assess the candidate's ability to respond professionally to the absurd. Every applicant who submitted the requisite letter of interest and resume by the December thirty-first deadline received the benefit of an interview, excepting two candidates who did not respond to requests for an interview. Questions were finalized in advance of the first interview and were designed to elicit information about the candidate's qualifications and readiness for the position he or she sought. Since all of these positions are nonpartisan, no questions were asked regarding political affiliations or activities undertaken by the candidates. One candidate applied for multiple seats but ultimately requested to be considered for one position only. No preference was given to any candidate. All nominees were chose based solely on their qualifications and suitability for the applied-for positions. All interviews were conducted by me between January eighth and seventeenth here at City Hall. The letters of interest and resumes were reviewed as integral components of the interview. Madam Mayor, Mayor Potem, fellow councilmembers, you have before you an additional copy of the resumes that were provided to you previously in your agenda review materials. I now present my nominees to you. To begin with, will Mr. Robert Harriman please stand? For the position of Planning Commissioner, I was particularly interested in nominating an individual with specialized knowledge and relevant experience that would not only translate well to the work of the commission, but also complement the talent that already exists there. Mr. Harriman fits the bill precisely. His background and experience align exceedingly well with the reasonable expectations for this position. Plus, he has a command of municipal code and a solid understanding of site visuals. He has lived in Victorville for thirty-eight years and is passionate about our city living up to its motto to be the key of the high desert. As a local business contractor who has completed hundreds of building projects, including the city of Victorville and the VVWRA, an experienced real estate appraiser, and a former high school basketball coach, I believe Mr. Harriman is the spot-on final addition to the Planning Commission. I have every confidence that he will act in the public interest and will more than capably carry out the duties that would be required of him under California Government Code Section Six-Five-One-Zero-Three. Finally, Mr. Harriman has agreed that upon appointment, he will participate in professional development afforded to city planning commissioners. He furthermore understands and accepts that in accordance with California Government Code Section Six-Five-One-Zero-One, he will become a member of a body that reports directly to us collectively. He will not report to me in any way. In consideration of the foregoing, it is my honor to now move that the council confirm the appointment of Mr. Robert Harriman to the Planning Commission.
Question. Mr. Harriman, when I was in the audience, excuse me?
No, begging your pardon, Madam Mayor, point of order, I've made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Jones.
I have a question for you.
Madam Mayor, I'm...
Excuse me?
No, you may not.
Excuse me?
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Excuse me?
It is not my understanding that there's a protocol to directly interview candidates.
You ask me questions about my reps?
I asked you.
I'm asking him a question.
I asked you.
The question's premature right now, we have a motion and a second, and once the, once the city clerk asks, at that point, it would be appropriate to have additional questions.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Now would be the time for comments or questions from councilmembers.
Sir, I heard you speak from the audience to this body, both in Victorville as well as in Apple Valley. You made statements regarding minorities, and I find that in regards to that, I question your ability...
Point of order, the questions should be confined to the motion on the table.
You asked me.
Madam Mayor, point of order, the question should be confined to the... I did not, I did not question, I questioned you. No, no, it is inappropriate to be asking my candidate questions, this is not the protocol.
Then I will ask you.
Thank you.
Do you find your rep to be representative of the population of Victorville?
I will refer you to the criteria that I explained to this entire council, the very detailed process that I undertook, a very, a very full interview, which consisted of one hour. I am completely confident in my nominee, as you were confident in your nominee.
The question you asked me was, did my reps have the values to be a dedicated representative as a planning, legislative, or community? I am asking you the same question because of the fact that I, as a member of the audience, heard this same gentleman that you just represented to me make remarks in reference to the following culture: Hispanic and African-American. My question is, does he hold the values for the dedication that will be faithful and loyal to carry out the duties of this city council?
Sure, I'm happy to answer your question, Mayor Potem Ramirez. First of all, I don't... When I ask questions of you, it was simply to hear fully that you had the confidence in each of your nominees, it was not to question your nominees, that's for starters. The second thing is, the second thing is, is no nominee, no member of any legislative body, and Ms. Wells is a wonderful person, as well as all of your candidates, and I in no way questioned them, I made that very clear at that meeting, that I in no way questioned their capability, I made that very clear. But most importantly, candidates or sitting members of any legislative board do not check their free speech rights when they walk into a door. If there is some reason that anyone thinks that Mr. Harriman is in any way racist or anything like that, I can assure you that it is completely unfounded. I have every confidence that Mr. Harriman will be able to complete the work of the Planning Commission faithfully, diligently, and represent our community well, he's highly qualified.
Maggie? Maggie, Maggie, if you don't be quiet, I'll have to have you removed. I think we're losing control of this here right now, and we need to get back.
Be appropriate to see if there's any other questions from other councilmembers.
I have no questions.
Yes, very intriguing how Councilmember Jones said that she tested her specimens, and this is what I'm going to call them, with competence and character, and one other quality factor. This man has been witnessed at this city council to argue with counsel if he wanted to have a staring contest. Counsel decided not to respond, to let these childish types of maneuvers and behavior sway away and hopefully not come back and rear its ugly head. Fortunately, or unfortunately, here they are, for good reasons, and that's very good, right? So we get to understand where he's coming from. This same man who bad mouths and models childish tantrums qualities are not characters of anything deemable or dignified for representation of any appointed seat in the city of Victorville. This person should be reprimanded and not lauded by being given a position that is being proposed at this moment. Leadership with staff, what staff members? I would dare to question. Passion of the city? I have to question his bouts that he has brought here as an embarrassment to the city council and to the city elected officials right now. And to those who witnessed these distasteful tantrums, my apologies to you and to everyone that is here today. This man's integrity and ability to represent anyone is in his personal self-interest. This election is a disgrace to any appointed office, and in my two years, he has not represented any of the values that the city of Victorville and our residents are deemed to and qualified to have someone in here. The most racist person before you is right in front of you, going to get an appointed elected office. Mr. Harris, Mr. Harriman? That is you.
I have to have order here.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes with Councilmember Gomez voting no, and Councilmember Ramirez voting no.
Thank you. As to my nominee for the Community Services Advisory Committee, will Mr. Michael Smith please stand? Mr. Smith is one half of the dynamic duo here tonight. He's a force of good for our community. I've had the distinct privilege of being acquainted with him for about ten years, and am honored to bring him forward for your consideration. Mr. Smith has strong connections with our community. He is a highly respected and beloved educator in Victorville, a physical education teacher in one school district, and a head cross-country distance track coach in another. He has a Bachelor of Arts degree in kinesiology and physical education, and is known for his skill in professional leadership and development. What stands out most clearly to me about him is his devotion to people, real people, your neighbors and mine. He's routinely stopped in public places by parents and former students who are quick to recount their fond memories of him and their appreciation for his impact on their lives, and that is the point here. Mr. Smith is driven to do all he can to help his neighbors live full and productive lives. He believes that city parks and recreation programs for public use and enjoyment are closely tied to our quality of life, having himself grown up benefiting from them. With a demonstrated track record, no pun intended, Mr. Smith, of excellence in education and volunteerism, he is an open book given to the kind of collaboration that produces positive results. His background, experience, and dedication to the betterment of our community made him the logical choice to serve on the Community Services Advisory Committee. In consideration of the foregoing, it is my honor to now move that the council confirm the appointment of Michael Smith to the Community Services Advisory Committee.
That's a motion, a second.
Yes.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Yes, Mr. Smith, welcome, welcome, being a part of the quality of life that you value and that we, the city of Victorville, also value. I look forward to hearing from that input, from the advisory comments that you will undoubtedly be pushing forward as we progress together. Welcome again, thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Mrs. Smith, will you please stand? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mrs. Smith, the other half of the dynamic duo is a brilliant go-getter with a laser focus on doing what is right and valuable. I've been acquainted with her for nearly ten years and am thrilled that she accepted my nomination. Mrs. Smith is a high-caliber woman filled with integrity and grit. She has been a fifth-grade teacher since two thousand and one in the AESD, and the Assistant Cross Country Coach in the Victor Valley Union High School District since two thousand and sixteen. She holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in English Literature with a minor in sociology, and a Master of Education degree in educational leadership. A dedicated and energetic leader who has served our community for at least two decades, Mrs. Smith is given to going above and beyond. She has what it takes to work effectively on a team, to... She has what it takes to work effectively on a team, to thoroughly evaluate any proposed ordinance or legislative matter that may come down the pike for review. You can be confident she will give a well-considered, honest appraisal of any matter put before her. And did I say she was brilliant? I did. Let me say it again, she is. She's a shining star, fully committed to the betterment of our community. Mrs. Smith has my wholehearted endorsement for this position. In consideration of the foregoing, it's my privilege to now move that the council confirm the appointment of Kimberly Smith to the Legislative Review Advisory Committee.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. Mrs. Smith, thank you for applying for the Legislative Review Committee. Also, welcome. I would love to share with you that although you meet, we meet only, they meet only probably once every year, which in my opinion, they should be meeting monthly, it's incumbent upon hopefully yourself that you would urge yourself to participate in council meetings and bring during, during those three minutes, any legislation that you feel that needs to fall in the ears of our city council. This has not been done in the past, and hopefully, as Councilmember Jones has lauded you, you will take that upon yourself and of course, bring all the knowledge that you can. We need these legislative committees to be more active than they have been in the years passing. Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Congratulations and welcome.
Congratulations to all of my nominees.
I do not have any speaker cards on this item. And we already made a motion in a second. We move on to item D7? Okay. Discussion regarding establishing a High Desert, a High Desert State University. At this time, I will ask council members if they have any questions, starting with Ms.
Well, it's very vagriss as establishing the High Desert State University, and I'm assuming that we will be engaging, hopefully, all of us into what does it mean to establish a High Desert State University? If there has been talks or any kinds of research in terms of meeting with the president, the ASB president, talking to our chancellor, Timothy White, and any other individuals who would have a, a play in making something of this nature happen. And so I don't know if that has been done, or if this is basically the start of this, if High Desert is initially of an extension of VVC, or if it's just something totally new created, if it's private, if it's public, how it's funded, what the sponsorships are. And I'm presuming that because there is no attachments, perhaps that is something that we are going to be engaging or probably directing staff to find partnerships with our current schools, colleges, and, and see how we can push forward something of this nature at the city level.
I will turn it over to our city manager. I think he can answer all those questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Yes, this item was originally requested at the request of Mayor Protam Ramirez and authorized to be agendized for discussion. And since that time, what wasn't known or shared with the council collectively about a four-year university is that there is an effort that I am aware of already existing. It's, there is a subgroup that's actually been formed, a subgroup to the Mojave Desert Economic Partnership, and they're a subset of the Mojave Desert Career Pathways Group. I actually had been invited to participate as a part of that subgroup, and it's a position that was actually held by previous city manager Doug Robertson. I've continued to, to represent Victorville. But it's also a subgroup that's represented by the town of Apple Valley, colleges represented, Victor Valley College, I should say. All the school districts are, are involved, the ones, Victor Valley High School particularly, I've seen at the meetings. Hisparia Unified is also a leader in the effort. And what I can tell you is that there, there is a study group, a study work being conducted. Were grants have been obtained to fund a study as to what all is necessary to try to satisfy locating, whether it's a UC Victorville or a Cal State Victorville. And it's in the very early stages. Certainly what I'm learning, at least at this point, is that there are discussions as to how to better ready, both at the elementary and high school levels, students so that they're able to enter and, and serve as a supply into a local university system. There's also study efforts to understand a lot of the macroeconomic demands of the university system throughout the state of California, particularly what is the supply available of, of seats, if you will, in the university system, and of course, what is the demand. And there seeming to be a sense of intersect, that the demand for education at the university level in California is growing so great to where there's, there's a likely concern that there's not enough universities, whether they're Cal State or UC, in, in large part because there's so much import of student into California. But notwithstanding that, I'm not aware of any active decision as to another investment by the UC or Cal State system as to a new university. But I think there's beliefs as regions like ours grow, that perhaps there could be a place for that in the future. And, and so at least at this point in time, what I can tell you is that there is an effort ongoing, and as a part of that effort, this focus is seeming to be towards how can we prepare ourselves at all levels to be ready for being able to actually accommodate a university when there's a need in California for an... So with that, if there's anything that, that I encourage is that perhaps not replicating what's already being done and, and perhaps encourage you to support our continued participation in that committee group.
Thank you. I think that answers some of those questions. I do not have any, well, let me see, just, do you have some? I make a, okay. The intent of a state university is, because of the economic development of the city, I have been told by big business that the intent to be able to come here, they need professionally educated individuals with BAs and MAs with higher degrees. The High Desert offers an AA degree, and being that I'm a former community college professor of 38 years, I know it's good education. However, the intent of the state university is not only to provide education, but to provide the base for the future of the city of Victorville, to bring bigger businesses with greater opportunities and better salaries. With students who will have BAs and MAs, then the city will grow in, in ways and beyond my words. But it is a High Desert State University, which means that it will provide education for everyone that wants, who's in the area or wants to come here. I know that the last state, state university that was created is down in Monterey. It is one of the smallest in regards to state universities. The size is important, but you have the population. I make a motion that we start an exploratory committee to look at the possibilities of having a state university here, so that students can have accessibility to provide economic development and save lives. That's the third one. Because it is very dangerous to be going from here to San Bernardino with the fog, and you've had already two major car accidents going down the hill. My whole point is, provide education for the future of the High Desert, to provide opportunities to have better jobs. That will give you what the American dream is about. Now, I know it's an immense idea, however, in 1983, I being a member of Copper Mountain Campus, we separated in 1989, 98, and we became an actual community college. We built our own college with community money. And we now have a full community college offering that has one of the best LVNRN programs in the area. All I'm saying is, it's time to look to the future, and it's time to see what is possible and where are our options in regards. I do believe, as our city manager has explained, that there are components already in place. It would be to the positive aspiration of this city council to work in coalition or partnership with these organizations, so that you would have a pre-K, pre-K through a master's degree. I'm just saying, the limits should not be placed now. It should be open so that you can start working, so that hopefully, in three to five years, it will be established that you will have your own state university. It can, it'll start small, there's no question about that. But you, and my, in my heart, feel that you deserve the right to have your own state university. Thank you. And so I put a motion that we should have an exploratory committee to look at the possibilities and options that are available to us.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Protam Ramirez?
Pardon me, I have further discussion, if I may. So I, I think there's some aspects of this that are really great ideas, and I, I can't say that I disagree with them. But I've been hearing rumblings about this for at least a year and a half, so I'm, I'm sure it's, has been going on before that. And, and if I understand, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Metzler, that we have already groups of people and organizations working on this very thing. They are doing all of the groundwork to move this forward. Is, is my understanding correct on that?
That is correct.
So, and then, is it, is it also true to say that the city's role in any kind of a development, if you will, of a, of a university, of university is more of a support role where we might deal with issues like zoning or providing other kinds of support? Would that be fair to say?
That is fair to say.
Okay. Thank you. So, I, I think it's a good thing. I think all of the, the reasonings from my good colleague are, are absolutely correct, but I don't see any need to reinvent the wheel. It's already being done. And I would certainly support, if this were to come back, for the city to support the efforts. If there's a, a real momentum going forward and we could support in the way that cities are permitted to support, I would certainly be in favor of that.
I have a motion by Mayor Protam Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Gomez.
Yes. I'm, I'm just waiting.
Any further comments?
Yes. I agree that we need, this city and the people in the city need to take whatever steps necessary to show a commitment to try to attain a state college, a four-year college. But I want to make sure that we do it in conjunction with efforts that are underway and that we lend our assistance. I, I, I'm concerned that if we form a separate exploratory committee, it would appear to be in competition, as if to say, the people in, in education aren't doing their job, and the city is going to take over. I, I, I don't want that to happen. I want us to cooperate with the people who are involved in education. I, I've known for the last four or five years that there's been a lot of individuals committed to try to get a state college here in the Victor Valley, in the High Desert. And I want to support that. But I don't want to detract from it. I want to support what exists rather than start again, because I'm, I'm just afraid, without discussion, and that may change if we have a discussion with the group, that it's going to appear that we're trying to wrestle away their, their, their ability to try to move forward. I want to assist, not, not take away. And I'm just afraid there might be a misunderstanding. If we form a committee, then there's a committee already formed. I worry about that. I, I'd like for us to, I, I agree with what's being said, but I think we should back away just a little bit, find out the people on the committee, the edu... Particularly, I, I know the schools, the high schools, the colleges are involved, and to, to start on endeavor when people are working toward it might be disruptive. That's the last thing we want to do. I think we have to show the state that we are unified, we have a united front, we're all going to work together. And that will accomplish more, I think, than having another committee. I'm for us assisting, I'm for the comments that have been made, but maybe moving a little fast without some further discussion with the existing effort of the people that are involved.
I agree with that.
So if I may also chime in, the city of Victorville has been in existence since September of 1962, when we were first incorporated. That's 57 years ago. I don't think the conversations today is too soon, almost six decades from now. And it's very easy to agree three people in the city council and write a formal resolution that does not escape go the "I like the idea, but" scenarios that are being put forth right now. I think they presume too much. If we get information straight from the horse's mouth, it's always the best, instead of having a filter. And I'm going to speak this personally, because I've personally attended these pathway meetings over at SCLA, and I've acknowledged what they're doing. And they're not doing the actual implementation of a college that can offer a BA or an MA or even a PhD up here in the High Desert. Even Hisparia has asked for satellite dishes, and if you look at the Hisparia 2030 resolutions that they've asked to have a satellite dish just from the associates to be incorporated for people in Hisparia to go, they have failed miserably. If you talk to the board members as well, you will begin to see, if you sit in these positions and hear and do your own filtering with your antennas, you will begin to see that there is nothing in play today, there hasn't been nothing in play since 1957 and since 1962, that's 57 years ago now. And as a council, we can authorize, under the power of 130,000 people approximately, sending letters of engagements to our assembly members, sending letters of engagement to our state senators, to Ted Alejandro, who is the county district, oversees the districts. There is that power behind just three people acknowledging the fact that we want to establish a phase of at least starting something exploratory, where council is held responsible minimally to just put the, yes, we are trying to bring in a Trader Joe's because we can get that type of education. The communities want and seek, but yet we don't produce. We say, yes, buts. These buts are, consistently hold us up. I don't know how much time it would require for an exploratory anything to happen. I don't know what the process is, if that would take away a lot of the salary that our staff is currently being paid. But I do know that when we represent and we bridge the gap between the people and their desires, we are not here for self-interest, we are here for the community needs. And that takes time. And when the time has come and we have a, a Mayor Protam that has uttered this, we need to support and back it. And this is for all of us. It's not for my interest. I'm already working on my degree, so I don't need to. But I'm looking for offspring, for people who are already here seeking that they're leaving our, their leaving the High Desert for jobs down there. I don't know if you've ever even sat in the panels where you have the high schoolers come in, and they're, these are the things they're saying. Our classes are eroded, they, they don't bring the technology. You can even see it here, we don't even have a voting system where you can know who voted what. We are past the time. The time is today, the time is now. I'm not trying to convince anybody, this is my personal opinion from me going out in the community and from me being engaged in these such things that have been brought us pathways, actually sitting in board meetings at VVC that occur once a month. I am engaged as well, so I understand fully what Mayor Protam Ramirez is, is speaking about, and this is what I like to place in the archives of today's agendized meetings.
I have a motion by Mayor Protam Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails with Mayor Garcia, Councilmember Cox, and Councilmember Jones voting no. Motion fails with Mayor Garcia, Councilmember Cox, and Councilmember Jones voting no.
Now we move on to item D eight, discussion and possible action regarding Councilmember Gomez's removal from committees. I have asked that this item be placed on the agenda and I think, and I thank you in advance for allowing this conversation to occur. As you are all aware, the city council issued a public position of disapproval against behavior of Councilmember Gomez at its August 21, 2018 meeting. The city council did so after careful deliberation of a past actions that include, among other things, violation of local and state law, blatant disregard of council policies. By bringing this item forward, I do so believing it can create an appearance of continued divisiveness. However, I believe that appearance is outweighed by the likelihood of liability Councilmember Gomez can bring to the city by participating in decision-making with other agencies on our behalf that is not truly representative of the position we take as a city council. At the December 18, 2018 city council meeting, we approved many committee assignments. Among those, we reaffirmed Councilmember Gomez's appointment as an alternate to the Mojave Desert Solid Waste JPA. We also appointed her to the primary representative for V I D A. Councilmember Gomez's appointment to V I D A gives me the greatest concern considering position last year involving the golf course and her blatant disregard to the potential for negative impact to our bonds. Combining this with the fact that we rely so heavily upon V I D A for the money that pays for our airport bonds, I am concerned that all of our hard work resolving our default issues will be thrown out the window with Councilmember Gomez representing us. Are there any questions from council members? I do have two speaker cards. The first one is Tyler Woodard. After him will be Ramiro Rodriguez.
Good evening, council. I have a letter that I'm going to read tonight that was signed by residents of Victorville requesting that the council vote to remove Blanca from the committees that she was appointed to. And I would like the clerk to enter this letter into the record. Dear Mayor Garcia, Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez, Councilmembers Cox and Jones, we as residents of the city of Victorville are writing you in support of removing Councilmember Blanca Gomez as a delegate to the Victor Valley Economic Development Authority and as an alternate to the Mojave Desert and Mountain Solid Waste. During the two years that Councilmember Gomez has been a member of this council, she has consistently behaved and conducted herself in an unethical manner, such as displaying her City of Victorville badge at Rialto City Council meeting and supporting their effort to turn Rialto into a sanctuary city. Another instance of unethical behavior displayed by Councilmember Gomez is when she attended former Hisperia Mayor Russ Blewett's funeral and livestreamed his funeral on Facebook. Yet another instance of unethical behavior, Councilmember Gomez engaged in was getting arrested at Hisperia City Hall for going into an undesignated area and refusing to leave. We feel that Councilmember Gomez will not represent Victorville's best interests as a representative on these committees and ask that you vote in favor of removing her. We also request that any person that Councilmember Gomez recommends to represent the city on any board or commission be appropriately vetted by all of you and city staff before being considered for an appointment. In conclusion, we feel that it would be appropriate for the city council to consider putting on a future agenda, a motion to censure Councilmember Gomez because her conduct is not what we expect of an elected official and feel the city needs to disapprove of her behavior appropriately. We hope you consider our concerns.
Ramiro Rodriguez. And after Ramiro, Maggie.
I don't know when all this hate is going to stop, but this is just a farce, this is just a muse, this is just theatrics going on to discredit one of our representatives. She does not represent the city council, she represents the voters. If voters wanted her out, they wouldn't have voted her in. Now, a lot of things have happened, but I see a lot of hatred, I see a lot of racism, I see a lot of division here. And it's seen every day. They even did so much as tried to impeach her, recall her. All they got was 972 votes, 972 votes, that's all they got, walking around trying to force people to revoke her.
Maggie.
And, oh, once again, Officer Bassinger, thank you for removing Maggie at the last meeting when we had inauguration for the two members. Thank you so much for physically removing her. And once again, what we're saying is, we voted her in and she's acting on behest of us, the voters. And she represents us, whether she gets arrested. And a lot of politicians got arrested, some of them got shot. So we live through history. They're not all going to agree with the needs of what the city council wants. The city council has changed, had a morphed size from a 75% population to a 17% population for one group of people to 54% of the population from 27% for the Hispanic community. And we're not even recognizing in the census. They group us up with Caucasians. They don't mention Hispanics here in Victorville. And let me tell you one thing, the city has to change and has to understand that us, the Hispanic population, is here. You don't want to give us, pay $5,000 for translation services, but you do pay $13,000 for travel expenses for somebody who makes $28,000 a year. She almost shut down the golf course. Hey, the people that live around there could have paid $10 a week, $40 a month association dues, and that would have liberated $55,000 a month for this city not to have to pay. But what? We have the rich people living off the backs of the poor people. That's nice and good. Let the millionaires pay for their own golf course, not us. Thank you.
Maggie.
As a point of order, I would like to state that Maggie Martin on three different occasions has been asked by the chair to quiet down. Any other person asked would be asked once. This contempt of the chair is not respecting the decorum of today's city council meetings I have entered into the record. Thank you.
Well, I don't have any clue what Mr. Ramirez is babbling about. I got removed. I don't know if I, I didn't hear it all from a city council meeting, is that what it was? A city council meeting, deputies removed me? That never happened, so I don't know what he's tripping on. But I'm wanting, Tyler Woodard was just up here with a list of some grievances about Ms. Gomez. Let me tell you, that's just the tip of the iceberg. So I'm going to let you know why she should not, an additional reason why she should not be on any committees, et cetera, et cetera. I'm going to fast forward. Couple weeks ago, I was appointed, I was voted in on a board of a nonprofit here in the high desert. We were having a meeting at this woman's home whom I've never been in, whom I've never been in, didn't know a couple of the people there, it was just a small gathering. We're in the middle of conversation, guess what? In walks Blanca Gomez, taking center stage with Manuel Busquets right behind her. And she's telling the people there at this Christian organization charitable foundation about how I'm, oh, it's dangerous for me to be here. Oh, you don't know about her, you don't know, and if you only knew. And it's even gone to the courts. Oh my God, woman, are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? Are you 12? Honest to God, are you 12? I cannot believe. Medication, that's the only thing I can come up with that she needs. There's no balance. Here's another example tonight. They read a motion was made, she didn't, she was checked out at the moment, whatever the case might be. She made a substitute motion and when that was not a fly, she didn't, she had to have the motion reread. Oh my God, I've been up since 4:00 AM and I've got 25 years on her and I can still keep up better than she can. No. No. Mm-mm. Her on anything that represents this city, badge, no badge...
You have 30 seconds.
Is not good for this city. It's not. And you talk about racist? I'm looking at one of the biggest racist hypocrites I've ever ran across. I'll tell you who she represents. She represents the Hispanics. That's who she represents because she sure as hell doesn't represent me or anyone that even remotely looks like me. Get real. The only one you're lying to and deceiving is yourself. And you think you're getting over on all of us.
Time is up.
You're not getting over on nobody, sister.
Your time is up. That was the only cards that I had. So we need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Are you inviting a motion?
I made the motion to have her removed, so I need a second.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I move a substitute motion that the council remove Councilmember Gomez from her two current committee assignments pursuant to California Government Code Section 36813, which in pertinent part states that the council, quote, "may punish a member or other person for disorderly behavior at a meeting," end quote. And that the council further order that she be afforded the opportunity for one-on-one training by a specialist with the League of California Cities about harassment and its implications.
Well, I do when it comes my turn to speak.
That's a substitute motion. Is there a second for that?
I'm prepared to move forward if there's a second.
Well, I made the motion.
I made a substitute motion basically saying what you did, but pursuant to California Government Code 36813.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Jones.
I have a discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Madam Mayor, may I? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. May I proceed? Thank you. The question now before us is whether Councilmember Gomez should be disciplined such that she be removed from the two committees to which she was duly appointed on December 18, 2018. These committees are the Mojave Desert and Mountain Solid Waste JPA and the Victor Valley Economic Development Authority. Without doubt, this is a serious matter of significant consequence, one that personally grieves me because I'm inclined to give grace, to help, and to overlook offenses when wise. Nonetheless, we are called tonight to weigh the merits of this issue judiciously and in keeping with the Councilmember Conduct Sections in our Code of Ethics, which state, number one, quote, "The professional and personal conduct of council members must be above reproach and avoid the appearance of impropriety. While it is understood that council members enjoy First Amendment rights, they should practice civility and decorum in discussions and debate, and refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other members of the council," end quote. And two, that they, quote, "shall support the maintenance of a positive and constructive workplace environment for city employees, private citizens, and businesses dealing with the city," end quote. In fact, our Code of Ethics is meant to help each of us fulfill our responsibility to assure public confidence in the integrity of local government and its effective and fair operation. While the proposed removal of Councilmember Gomez from two committees may to some be borne from her wrongdoings over the course of her tenure as a council member, I've instead asked myself, what has changed since the moment I voted in favor of her appointments that would cause me to consider her removal? According to California Government Code Section 36813, quote, "The council may establish rules for the conduct of its proceedings. It may punish a member or other person for disorderly behavior at a meeting," end quote. And this is my unenviable focus. Councilmember Gomez's disorderly behavior. My deliberation makes no judgment about her perspectives, her politics, or her personal style. She is free to bring these to the table. During the three meetings subsequent to my votes to appoint, Councilmember Gomez spurned this council's adopted meeting rules when the clear dictate is that she comply with them. She blatantly disregarded the orders of the chair and/or the council's Code of Ethics. Councilmember Gomez, through her conduct, effectively subjugated the council's legitimate authority to her own ill-presumed individual power. After witnessing this as a sitting council member, I felt compelled to watch the video of the August 21, 2018 city council meeting in which that council took a public position of disapproval against the behavior of Councilmember Gomez. Meticulous accountings of events were voiced by council members that revealed a pervasive pattern of conduct violative of the council's policies and procedures. The specifics were particularly troublesome considering Councilmember Gomez by then had more than one and a half years of experience behind the dais and had had the benefit of training by the League of California cities regarding her role and responsibilities as a council member. Based on Councilmember Gomez's disorderly behavior during the meetings of December 18, 2018, January 15, 2019, and January 29, 2019, as well as my subsequent review and analysis of the August 21, 2018 video, internal memoranda, and unsolicited statements from city staff, I've reexamined the appropriateness of her serving on external committees. To expect better deportment from her in complying with the rules of procedure adopted by such agencies would be unrealistic given her repeated transgressions here on this council and her seeming unwillingness to self-regulate. I am confident in my research and objective evaluation of the facts. In view of the foregoing, the reasonable, even-handed, and warranted response to Councilmember Gomez's disorderly behavior is to remove her from her current committee assignments and to further order that she be afforded the opportunity for one-on-one training by a specialist with the League of California Cities about harassment and its implications. It is my hope that this offer, if approved, will not only prove restorative for Councilmember Gomez, but also assist the council in its obligation to provide a positive workplace environment for its two direct employees, the city manager and city attorney, along with other city employees more generally. I subscribe to the intent and purpose of our Code of Ethics wherein it is stated that, quote, "The citizens and businesses of Victorville are entitled to a fair, ethical, and accountable local government which has earned the public's full confidence for integrity." Madam Mayor, I yield the floor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
I want to say something.
Whatever you get to me.
This situation occurred because Mrs. Jones nominated Blanca for that position, knowing that the rule had been set prior to our election that she could not hold any committee office. I want to clarify that. That's the only reason why we're having this discussion. I was told by the mayor that that was the rule. That's why I did not say anything regarding and was shocked when my fellow council member did so. So I find it very difficult to sit here and hear what has been said, which is true. I'm not denying it. And I cannot whitewash what has been done. But I made a point to do what the mayor told me in regards to what had already been decided by the previous city council. And the only reason we're here is because that rule was not followed by my fellow council person.
Madam Mayor. So my good colleague feigns shock when in fact I did not nominate Councilmember Gomez for any position. I seconded it. And to be very clear, on one of the committees, the vote was 5-0. It was a unanimous decision of this council, including Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez. On the second committee, the vote was 4-1 with Mayor Garcia voting in dissent. So this was a decision of the board. I think it is totally inappropriate to misrepresent the facts. And I would call on our city manager then to speak to the issue as to whether a formal decision was ever made as to Councilmember Gomez serving on any committees. I would not have violated such a decision if it had happened. In fact, it did not. Mr. Metzler.
Staff did in fact research the matter as to whether or not...
Staff did, in fact, research the matter as to whether or not official action was to take place prohibiting Councilmember Gomez from sitting on a committee. And we did not find anything in the record showing that. As close as we could come is statements made in response to her behavior as to where it was attempted to be made clear that in public audiences, she does not represent the views of the city council, unless, in fact, the city council has approved those in advance. So speaking to the specific question, there was nothing official taken with respect to Councilmember Gomez actually sitting on committees.
Yes. If I might, I'm not sure. I hadn't thought too much about this. First thing I want to correct is the statement by Mr. Romero that any councilmember can be appointed to a committee and represent their own views. There's nothing could be further from the truth. The councilmembers represent their views in the deliberation. But once a city council appoints a councilmember to a committee, they must represent the city's views. And the city's views are three members of the council. If they don't represent the views, then obviously they need to be removed from that committee. The only purpose that these members that sit here are appointed to a committee is to represent the city council. They're not there to represent the public. And it doesn't make any difference what their own views are. They can't even represent their own views. They represent the official city views. When I heard that there may be a request to remove Mrs. Gomez from a committee, I was initially opposed to that. That's really a position that's... Wow. We do have an oddity that I can't figure out. We have individuals who claim they want us to get together and then come to the microphone and spread hate and discontent and say things that aren't true. So there's a purpose in some people's minds, simply divide, to divide the council, divide the community, which is the worst thing that could happen. We all represent this community. We have our own people, we have our own, I guess you'd say, supporters. Obviously, people, as many votes as we get, they vote for more than one of us. We do not have districts. We don't vote by anything other than at large. And we get to represent our views. We get to express our views. The people vote. And then we come to do the city's business. But once this council takes a position, that is the position that this individual must take if they're representing the city. They didn't, as someone mentioned up here earlier, they didn't leave their First Amendment rights at the door. They still have the right to speak freely and express their views. But they can't represent the city on a contrary view. That is incorrect. It can't happen on any member. Any member that goes to a meeting where the city council has appointed them and represents a view contrary to the official view of this council needs to be removed immediately. Now, I was, when I heard this may occur, the first thing in my mind is, I'm not about to vote for that. This is going to be further divisiveness. And then immediately after that, we had an individual who wanted something read in the record, was not here. The city clerk acknowledged that, that they had received the email. It would be read in the record. But Miss Gomez insisted on addressing an item that was out of order and insisted on reading it in the record. The mayor directed Miss Gomez that she was out of order. She refused to take the directions. She refused to comply with the city's direction. She refused to comply with the policies that have been described by the council. I, it appears that it doesn't make any difference what the city's position is. Miss Gomez is not going to comply. She's simply not going to follow the rules. She's not going to present the city's point of view. And if she's not going to, I can't imagine that she would even want to be on the committee. Because what would happen, the first time that she goes to a committee meeting and misrepresents the views, we have to call a special meeting, correct it, have a special meeting to correct the view, and then remove her. Why would somebody subject themselves to that unless they wanted attention so bad they're willing to embarrass the city? We're trying to build a city where we work together. The community works together. The council works together. We put our best foot forward. It's extremely important for not only the citizens, but potential investors, people who want to move here, to show that we have an enlightened city council. We are cooperating with each other. We care about the community. And I'm not sure what this divisiveness and hate-mongering is supposed to accomplish. It serves no purpose. And yet, the people who come to the council-
You have 30 seconds.
...and spread hate and discontent, and yet, they say they want to unify the city. I have no idea what in the world people are thinking about. But I was willing to allow Miss Gomez to represent the city, but she has made it clear. She refuses to represent the city. And her supporters make it clear she's not going to represent the cities. She's going to represent their own point of view or some segment of the community. That is not the way you run a railroad, so...
Time is up.
That's all I have to say.
So I'd like to have in writing these local, state violations. I should be in jail, my God, penalized and paying all these restitutions. I don't know why no one hasn't put anything up and I haven't had my due process. It's unfortunate that the electorate didn't choose us to be the judges, right? I don't fear any of this. This is just grandstanding, and all it is is called scapegoating, grandstanding for the things that we have and have not decided. There's an election coming in 2020. It's so typical of having councilmembers in such discussions. When we can be progressing the ideas and our community's safety, welfare, life, and liberty, and pursuit of happiness, instead, we are so focused on discussing one councilmember who has been opinionated in representing and bridging the gap amongst city council and administration, the biggest cohorts that have our monies tied in like this. Where is the transparency of our budget, our monies? What happens when we ask about this? Why don't we get our answers responded? I am not here to serve at the leisure of any two or any three majority of these individuals. Mr. Cox, for 30 years, held reins in the city of Victorville. He continues to have them. He's very influential in this community. And unfortunately, the power will not be relented without a fight. And I will continue to represent the best interests of the people, of the community, by doing footwork, walking into businesses, saying hi, producing 10,000 business cards in two years. And I will continue to do that because I am here to serve you, your views, your representation of what you think is important in your personal life, your liberty, what you think is presumable of your freedoms, not what my status quo colleagues believe it should be. And I'm not here for that. I was not elected for that. I do not represent the views of the city council. I represent the views of the public, again, to protect their life, liberty, and the pursuit of their happiness, not those three members who have a stronghold over the city or think they need to. I represent the electorate. I can assure you that the council's opinions, their pseudo-facts, I will not represent. I will continue to represent the electorate. And Mr. Cox, if you would please share the official view of the city in all the committees, because this is not in writing. I would like my colleagues to never have to face anything of this type of heresy. If you can please present for each committee what the official view of the city is, that would really keep every other councilmember here in the safe zone. Also, during our council meetings, anything that's happening, any restrictions, any expression, the expressions here are because every day I'm out in the community asking what you want. I don't follow the 30-year former manager's, Cox, decision. And believe me, I will not ascribe to a status quo mentality. You think about it. VBWRA, Victor Valley Water Reclamation Authority. Your wastewater, toilet water. We are going to be in litigation. And we fight all the time with VBWA. And these are other four cities. So we have Victorville, Hesperia, and we have Apple Valley and the county sitting. And we're fighting with them in litigation. And you have no clue how much money we're spending because the decision of three people in the committee has butted and fought? You think that represents the community when we have $238.9 million and your money could be invested in other things or other areas? Think about the golf course. $1.2 million in a golf course that sits approximately 680 houses. That's not even a 1% of 130,000 people that we have here. That money, and we spend, and every year, $666,000 on the back of what community? I can't represent the privileged individuals who are consistently talking about a neighborhood that's for the retirement. 29, the median age is 29. We have a future to foresee. And I am here for a future. If you can tell, I am the youngest one here. If you can tell-
You have 30 seconds.
-I don't ascribe to what others are going to say isn't in your best interest when I've gone to you at your church, at your business dwelling, at the food giveaway. I'm not going to ascribe when I'm hearing your voice loud and clear. That would not be the way to represent the electorate. And that's why I'm here, and I will continue to represent you. And I appreciate the fact that you have placed me in a position where the voice of yours will continue to be resounding.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes with Councilmember Gomez voting no and Mayor Protem Ramirez abstaining.
Now, we move on to item D9, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Creation of a Task Force to Create a Homeless Strategic Action Plan. I will ask councilmembers if they have any questions at this time.
Yes, Madam Mayor. May I brief, just very briefly tee this up and then hand it over to Mr. Metzler so that we can have questions? Would that be acceptable?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So, since this was my requested item, may I briefly tee it up and then hand it over to Mr. Metzler and then do questions? Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. All right. So briefly, this item is before the council so that it may consider creating a city-led task force that'll include stakeholders such as business partners, community groups, and perhaps the Department of Behavioral Health, et cetera, and someone that's been homeless. And so, as we delve into the subject, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Metzler to share briefly on this, and then the council will go from there under the mayor's leadership.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Yes, this item was put on the agenda resulting from conversation we had and started last Tuesday at our special meeting regarding homelessness. And certainly, that was an opportunity where we had to share with you not only what is homelessness, what are the demographics subscribing to homelessness, what are the causes, and perhaps what are some of the solutions. We also discussed a lot of the services that are going on. We also discussed a lot of the duplicative services that are available. And with that, we did not get a direction. I think there was a lot to digest and absorb at that meeting. But certainly, staff is looking for direction as it relates to dealing with the homelessness issue. We certainly are reacting and responding to a lot of the issues that we're dealing with. Certainly, there's an enforcement side. There's certainly a cleanup side. But as we reviewed some of the numbers as they deal with the 2018 point-in-time count, compare them to the number of beds and rooftops that are available, there is a belief, just based upon that simple comparison, that there is a need for additional resources. Some of what we hinted at at the last meeting was perhaps forming, or I'm sorry, serving in a much more leadership role. That's certainly a role that the city can play. And I believe it can play well, given the structure that we currently have. We have access to a lot of those that are in the nonprofit sector, social service sector, where we could actually link together or bring together to try to eliminate duplication and also try to create and work towards a more common vision that complements the resources that are already available. So with that, it was a long meeting, a lot to say. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity over the last week to think about it. Certainly, staff is looking for, I think at the last meeting, we were looking for an endorsement of what it's currently doing. And we're certainly looking for some further direction on the matter.
Well, no, it's to you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Madam Mayor. There are several agencies and associations who are dealing, trying to deal with the homeless issue. There's a mass amount of information that's available, particularly in the LA area, that they've been struggling to try to find a solution. I also recently told that the new governor of California is going to withhold funding from cities that do not meet their low and moderate income housing objective. And I wanted to ask the staff, not particularly now to go in the details, but we want to make sure that we're meeting our goals in that, because I don't want money withheld. And I also do believe that the homeless issue itself is several segments. There is the mentally ill problem that's acknowledged by a lot of people. There are the homeless who want to be homeless. There are those who are not, I guess, because they're alcoholics or on drugs or whatever, but they're addicts. And it seems to me that there has to be two or three different groups to deal with those individually. I don't think you can deal with them at one time. But there is money now available through the federal budgeting for the mentally ill and probably homeless, and through the state. County's very involved with the city on having a housing project. And there's a lot of other things available that I'm not aware of. And I'm sure that staff can make the council aware of the different groups that we need to-
You have 30 seconds.
-join, form with, help, assist. But it's a problem that's not going to go away. And this council is being held accountable to do something from the community, from the business people, from almost everyone. We can't duck it. No one else is going to take care of it. It's going to be up to us, and we've got to get involved.
I think that in regards to the homeless, it's not a question of when, it needs to be done now. There are people who are suffering. And let me say that I spoke to Mr. Edwards of the Rescue Mission, who has been voted as one of the best rescue missions in the state of California regarding the implementation of health care, housing, and such. So I believe that we have so many components, so many options of people who are wanting to help the homeless that a coalition or a partnership of all those who are in favor of helping should get together and actually be like a workshop and work together, find out their specialties, set it up so that we can have, and I know people will hate this, but we do need to have a village, a village where everything that is needed is there for them, where they can be housed, where they can be fed, where they can be taken care of medically, so that if you work like one, even though there are many, money will be saved and so will lives. And I think it's about time that a master plan with all of those who are involved-
You have 30 seconds.
...should meet and have, if you want to call it, a conference, if something, whatever. But something needs to be done. And there's no more time to waste because too many people are on the street. And it's affecting the city, one way or the other. Three buildings have already been burned downtown. We are losing money because more money is going to have to be spent if we don't take care of the problem.
Madam Mayor, may I? Yes, thank you. So I concur with the comments of my colleagues. And I know that the city has already been very involved in looking at this issue over the course of time. But I think now is a time to kind of beef up the committee that the city has and include external stakeholders so that we can really have good representation in the city as to what's going to meet the needs in our unique area. I think it's very important that we begin that process now and do it as quickly as possible. It doesn't have to be something- It doesn't have to be something long and drawn out. I've been, I've been talking about this publicly for about a year and a half and I, I, I know of a few people that have expressed interest, but that, for me, that would be certainly a decision that the city manager and his team would make as to who might ultimately be on that. I think the council should certainly weigh in on what kinds of community partners we want involved in this so that we get the fullest possible representation as to what we need to do going forward, what we can reasonably achieve and what we can do to mitigate some of the unwanted issues that are happening in our city as well as attend to the very real needs of some of the most vulnerable in our community. So with... You have thirty seconds? I'm, I'm good, Madam Mayor, so I don't know if any other council members wish to make comments.
Yes, so please listen carefully when you hear the speaker speak. This is a test. Why build a task force for the homeless issue? Because I'm part of the status quo, Cox has to approve this. Why build an exploratory committee to find aid in higher education that we can support in the city? Well, I'm interested because I'm an educator, but you're not status quo. Cox didn't approve it, it didn't pass. Listen carefully, continue to listen carefully. Cox says, "No one else will take care of the need if we don't take it." If you don't know this, every single month in Rialto, there's an ICH meeting, an inner council on homelessness. The county has, has an actual plan to work through this. The city and our resounding areas do not have something for our college to be able to have a bachelor's or a master's here, even in that regard in terms of public. So I want you to listen carefully when the master speaks, the man behind the curtain. If you haven't been here long enough, you don't know this, but if you've been here long enough, you will capture it very quickly, read between the lines, you will see it. Every single meeting, it's obvious. When the master speaks, everyone follows. If it's a note, you will see the gestures, the non-manual behaviors, watch really closely. Staff is even afraid of this man with the amount of power that he wields.
You have thirty seconds?
So I don't understand why we continue to have these types of gestures. When will the city become the empowerment of itself? When will we stop? And as a point of order and decorum, Mr. Besseger, this woman right here, for the fifth time, has interrupted, so please pay attention. And I want you to know that every time she speaks, after three times, she is no longer being quieted by the chair and this needs to be entered into the record. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, point of privilege, may I state my point?
I, I have some speaker cards, I think.
Just quickly, if we could give a warning to our community member that it's, that the comments from the audience are making it difficult to concentrate.
And it's almost ten o'clock, so I don't know if we will be able to finish up our agenda here. I do have some speaker cards, I will start with Brian something. And then after Brian, another one, Espinoza, and read the writing. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I'm here with the FAM Spot to address the issue or this task force. And I cannot stress this enough, we need it more than ever. Considering the fact that we, that there's twenty-five, well, twenty-two percent homelessness in, in all town Victorville, it's getting out of hand and it's been out of hand for almost thirty years. And me, the FAM Spot, we've been the only organization who's been trying to combat this, trying to help these people, but it's not enough. We have, we have something else here which is called hope.
Excuse me for interrupting you, but it's a two-time, a two-minute time limit.
Oh.
Not three, okay? It's two minutes. Go, continue.
And they're, they're in San Bernardino. We need something here and I don't want anything that has to do with, that's not connected to helping these people. And with my mentor, Jose, behind me, he's been addressing that we need someone from our association, like the youth advocates here, which is me and a couple of others, or youth advocates and stuff, to at least be a part of this, this task force and see where it goes from there.
You have thirty seconds?
And not to mention, this is going to, if, if, if it gets, if it gets passed, we can have job positions for it. It can create jobs and help the homeless. Either, in other words, it's going to kill two birds with one stone, so I really hope you guys adopt this and thank you so much.
Is there anyone here by that name? Espinoza? No? Okay. Jose Chavez?
Going everybody, how we doing?
Fine, thank you.
Alright, that's good. So I am here on the behalf of FAM Spot, which is the Homeless Youth Drop-In Center in downtown Victorville, right off Sixth and C Street. I've lived here my whole life, June twelfth, nineteen ninety-three, you know, I can't tell you anything else, to be honest with you, you know, went to school here, graduated, and now I find myself giving back to the community. Just, I really wish we could come together on something, you know, it's important, it's just not too long ago. I was helping a gentleman who was, believed he came here in nineteen fifty-three, alright? He was baptized in the Mojave River, okay? Not only that, he lived right there next to the Dre House on, on E Street. And as a young, as a young man, he, you know, was working real hard, you know, doing his thing, he even graduated from Victor High and he got hit by a car. He got hit by a car which disabled him and now he's, you know, living off social security. Since nineteen fifty-three, okay, you know, this gentleman did what he, you know, he knew was best, worked hard, did what he had to do and to, you know, under certain circumstances, that was taken away from him, his ability to actually work and give himself, you know, a self-esteem. I'm advocate for this man right now. Right, he's sixty-eight years old, nobody's helping him out. Comes into the Family Assistance Program, nobody bothers to, you know what I mean, nobody that's off the streets has bothered to come and ask him for help, but, you know, I'm not only just a youth advocate, I'm a, I'm an advocate for those who need help. You have three categories of people, you have the youth, you have the majority, and you have the elderly. Who's going to help the elderly, who's going to help the youth? You know, that's all I got to really put in this, but, you know, thank you for your time once again. Family Assistance Program, that's your go-to guy. If you guys really want to get this pushing, speak to my boss, Darryl Evey. Thank you, God bless.
Elgin Blanton, and after Elgin, Deanne Hudgens.
We attended the homeless workshop last week and I was very pleased to see this as an agenda item today because it's definitely a huge concern for the citizens of Victorville. My husband was born here and I moved here in nineteen fifty-five, so we've been here a very long time. He's seventy-four, I'm seventy-two. The presentation, I think, was done well. I think possibly it wasn't in-depth enough for our community. I think we had a lot of county statistics, but I think that this task force needs to be Victorville center, not looking at all statistics state, countywide. I really think that Councilmembers Cox and Jones had a really good handle on it in evaluating the levels of homelessness, which was again reiterated this evening. We have people who are ill, we have people who are terminally homeless, they have no desire to do anything else, and we have people who really need help because they have economic situations and things like that in their lives that have created the problem. I think the task force needs to really take into consideration and evaluate very carefully our homeless crisis in Victorville using our statistics...
You have thirty seconds?
...not the statistics for the entire county. I think that the groups have been named tonight are really excellent. I think that the chamber is somebody who needs to be consulted because I think they've already started looking at these things. Business people who are affected, property owners, including homeowners, I think should be considered a part of this task force. It's not a village, we need a solution. Thank you.
Deanne Hudgens, you're Deanne, right? Okay. Chef, facial?
Good evening, I just wanted to reiterate what my former veteran just said. I think she's correct as well, I think it needs to be Victorville-owned and all of you know, the whole world knows, I'm the poster child because I was a former Army veteran. And I, first of all, I think you guys are really doing a good job on trying to move the agenda, all three of you, and I like your ideal as well, I like your, both your ideal, but I think, I wish that the council with, and Mr. Cox, you're on the right path as well, but I think the staff needs to come out and really, I'd like to take them out one night or one day and see what it's like being homeless, you know, just to get the experience, because that's what they're doing in LA. And they, you're right, they are going to probably lose some of their money, but I think if the staff members or even the council members would come out and actually just see, I mean, we have, we have some great veterans in here and each one of these veterans kind of understand it, especially when a veteran is homeless. We go through, I had, I had a mental disease too and I'm surprised that my wife even married me, I mean, you know, it's hard on a woman when a man or a woman, vice versa, has PTSD and they suffer, but I would like to maybe one day invite the council out to actually go through and see what, what, you know, what a homeless person goes through and my colleague right before, she's right, we need to own this, we need to own this and, and I think a plan needs to start here, but you guys are doing a great job, just keep up the good work and I'd like to take you out one night and drive and let you talk to someone on this.
You have thirty seconds?
Thank you.
Being that it's ten o'clock, do we continue or shall we just...
You have a requirement in the policy manual that says that you wouldn't consider any of the new business under the D items after ten o'clock unless a majority of the council decided to do so, so you still haven't finished this item yet, it's up to the council if you want to continue on D, you're up to D ten after this item.
Yes.
I will do whatever the council wants, but I gotta have a five-minute break.
Well, okay.
I gotta have a break, I'm sorry, that doesn't mean the council needs a break, but I need to go to the restaurant.
Well, go ahead and we'll decide whether we need to conclude this here.
Might we have a quick recess?
Typically, you would still have time for public comments and items, the E items are still on the agenda. The ten o'clock limitation pertains to items under written communications, which is item D, so the council would have to, by majority, agree to continue to discuss either this item or item D nine.
Okay, so we're...
Is it the pleasure of the council to continue this, continue discussing this item at this time?
Well, I would make a motion to continue item D nine and D ten for the next meeting that we will have and, as you said, per policy, and then continue E one through the rest so we finish that off.
Are second to that motion?
There are no second? Motion dies?
Madam Mayor, if I might, maybe just to offer some suggestion to, to move forward, unless you want to adjourn for the recess, I can frame a recommendation based upon what I've heard today, the feedback that we've gotten today and as of last week, but if we wanted to recess, I'd certainly be prepared on return to frame a recommendation that perhaps you can consider that would offer direction moving forward.
Just complete our agenda for tonight? Or just this one item?
What I was suggesting, if you want to recess, is I think I've heard other council members interested in recess as well for five minutes.
Five minutes? Okay, we'll take a quick five-minute then.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Five-minute recess?
On D, it would be appropriate to at least finish D nine since it's not, since we haven't finished that item and give the public the ability to speak on it.
Okay, we will continue on item D nine. I do have one card left, Romero Rodriguez.
Well, I attended last week's special meeting at three o'clock in the afternoon. It was a lot of people here. We got to see a lot of, we got to see a lot of videos of what actually the city and the police department is doing about the homeless situation, how they attend to the homeless people. We got to see, hear a lot of people come up here and speak about the effect of the homeless people. And we got, I got to see the statistic of the, of the numbers, of the number of homeless people, which is not on the agenda video anymore, it starts after they put in the numbers. As, as to my recollection, the city of San Bernardino came down with counters and they also called us, some city members, so they went in groups and they counted and we have a total of two hundred and ninety homeless people here in the city. And then later on, the city addressed, some, some members addressed the count, the homeless people as nuisance, that before they were allowed to tear down their tents and, and their, when they congregate by the corner, now the city laws do not allow them to do that. You know what? These are human beings, these are people, these are human beings that, that don't have it as good as we do, but to see them as, as subhuman, hey, there were laws passed that they used to see people subhuman before, but we did away with those. We even have a holiday for that, man, that we celebrated a few weeks ago. But to see a homeless person, and you know what? We don't want to do the shelters, we don't want to do the village because it'll attract more people over here, then what are we going to do? Well, City of Los Angeles has fifty-three thousand people, fifty-three thousand homeless people, we have two hundred and ninety.
About thirty seconds?
And we can't deal with that, then we don't really have a proper group of people attending this. Good idea what you have, Rita. We can, we can, we can alleviate by just having association dues for the golf course, alleviate fifty-five thousand dollars a month by having the millionaires prepare for their golf course. That would give us fifty-five thousand dollars a month, that would fix the homeless population immediately. Thank you.
Okay, those were all the cards that I had, so...
Madam Mayor, if I might, just considering what we've heard, and I, I would start by saying what got us to the point of having a special meeting last Tuesday and then having this conversation tonight about having the, the homeless task force. Even before we had the meeting a week ago Tuesday, staff hasn't been fully aware of a formal policy. In fact, we quite honestly haven't really had a clear sense of what the council's opinion approach is in addressing or, or dealing with the homelessness-related matters. We, as staff, along with our very strong partnership with the Sheriff's Department, have been working in large response to, to the issues that we face on a day-to-day ish, a day-to-day basis. We've also been doing everything we possibly can to connect to resources, but I think we're certainly at that point where there needs to be a little bit more. And up until this, this course of conversation, we haven't really got a sense of whether or not the council would be supportive of even that as, as a basic. So with that, I believe staff is certainly hearing a desire to do more, the concept of the task force is something that I think we can evolve beyond what we currently have. And what we currently have, if you want to call it a task force internally, is, is the group that's actually got us to, to this conversation today. Internally, we rely on a team comprised of our code enforcement officer, we have a deputy city manager involved, myself, multitude of other staff, certainly the, the police chief sits at the table with us, the hope team is represented, I would certainly add the fire chief as well, but I think we're at a point where we could probably expand that to be on, be beyond just our four walls here, where we're actually identifying key stakeholders that can actually provide a very constructive, helpful effort to further address, whether that's... a very constructive, helpful effort to further address, whether that's providing more support resources, or even getting into more beds and more rooftops. Those are some of the things that I think from what we're gathering from you, we're feeling supported in actually moving forward and pursuing some kind of plan. Of course, it's going to require resources more than what we have. We might even have to retool some staffing, which we can do. But at least hearing that you want us to do more and perhaps expand into linking with stakeholders in the community, we can do that. And so staff can lead that effort. We can also work towards identifying the financial resources necessary to get us to providing more services to reduce, obviously, the impacts that we're currently experiencing.
I agree with that. So then our motion would be to create the task force, but to include others to join us. And I know there's others that have already contacted us, business people within the community that would like to be a part of it, that may be considered.
And I would encourage that it be staff-led. We certainly can report back to the council, especially when we get to decision points where we need additional input. But I think certainly if it's staff-led, we can collaborate and keep things moving forward and trying to make progress.
Okay. So that would be the motion then, to create the task force? Was that your motion, Ms. Jones?
I didn't make a motion, but I'm certainly happy to. So I move that city manager and his team create a, broaden its task force to include key external stakeholders in the community such that we can get good direction as to how to move forward.
I second that.
As a point of order, this is untimely. We were still under consideration for council members, and I know I had something to say, and I've been skipped, and I know that was not duly the motive, but I want to make sure that that's expressed.
No, we haven't gotten to that point yet. You still have time to.
Just have a motion right now? Do you have a second?
Yes.
Okay. So now would be the time for further discussion.
Yeah, now it's time for your discussion.
Right. So as another point of order, I wasn't able to be able to be a part of the conversation before it was created. So as a participant and as a council member, part of representation of the people, I also like my suggestions to be considered when motions are being made. So I appreciate the fact that even after the fact, I can at least consider making a recommendation or even modifying what has already been stated by a couple of council members and the city manager. And so my input is asked forth. The strategic planning and goals that we can implement suggest possibly a small fund to help our task force, to use tools to help the homeless out on the streets, and to fund the task force to initiate phase one, having our homeless populations receive direct, whether it be paper or oral resources, I'm talking about programs that have been up here, from the county or the city, in order to becoming more integrated into our cities. So for example, giving the homeless bags, gloves, and other necessary tools to clean up our community parks, streets, gutters, and any dilapidated areas. This method can provide a simple job for the homeless as a starting phase. Consider our task force to sit in an ad hoc committee where Garcia and Mayor Protemp Ramirez will sit to provide input in which agencies and city departments will be awarded the funds, and how interconnected these applicant agencies are in the communities that they're sitting. So if you're not aware, CDBG block grants, a lot of it is given to the actual departments in the city and other organizations. So if we already have two committee members at the ad hoc, it would be viable to continue that and integrate this task force, that we're not reinventing or splitting ourselves when it comes to monies. Having the task force report periodically to the board in writing and orally for updates with a biannual workshop on homelessness for all council members to be able to provide any input and be updated directly from the task force. So in this public address about concerns that I've addressed, just so you know, between January twenty-ninth and three o'clock, six months ago, I was the one that brought this motion up. And it was important because not only did the former council members unanimously vote to have this on the agenda within a six-month period, it took several reminders for the administration to be reminded that our deadline for the six months was shortly approximating. So I appreciate the January twenty-ninth, three o'clock meeting that happened to fall in place. Hopefully, it would have been sooner, but we're here today. And also, in terms of this discussion, I'd like to let you know that several community members from the city of Victorville are concerned because they attended these meetings, and they wanted to re-watch the meeting, you know, to re-edify what was happening in the meetings, or re-institute. And the webcams are told to me that are redacted, and they're editing excluding information that the city already displayed publicly. This is not a first of its types. I have on several occasions publicly here at the dais, and to the city manager expressed my disdain over what I call tampering of web documentations. And so I think we need to look at this closely. If we were just moving from one room to the other room, and perhaps our IT department missed out the few five minutes, I mean, that would probably be plausible. But next time, let's consider that we have a community that's also watching online, and we don't want to ever project to them that we're trying to keep them out of communicating their important input. And so when I have a concern resident, several of them approaching and attesting that perhaps this is redacting and tampering of our documents, which is, this is a government field, you don't want to do anything of that nature. You want to be very careful. So I want to make sure that administration who is listening very carefully understands that there is a concern in play. Thank you.
Yes, just quickly, Madam Mayor, I think all of the comments related to the perhaps different phases in helping our homeless community were very helpful. But the motion that's before us is to create a task force. So this is the very preliminary stage. Those other things would be considered at a later point, I would expect.
And I would venture out to modify that task force to already include our two ad hoc committee members, Mayor Garcia and Mayor Protemp Ramirez. They are already a part of it, so I think that would be plausible as well.
Is that a substitute motion?
That's a modification of the initial motion.
Okay. Is there a second for that? That's basically a substitute motion. Is there any second?
Is it an amendment? Or a substitute? Sorry, that's an amendment. So then there needs to be a second on the amendment to then, if it passes, then incorporate it into the main? Okay.
There being no second, the motion dies?
We're back to the original motion now.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia.
Would you mind repeating the motion?
To broaden the task force.
Original motion?
The original motion. Is staff-led?
A city-led task force that is now going to include external stakeholders to take a look at what our city needs to do going forward.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Item D ten.
You, D ten, you'd have to take a vote of the council if you want to consider it. Right now, your rules say that we would just move that to the next meeting.
I would make the motion to move D ten if the majority of the council agrees. If not, then I would yield back that position and let the council make another suggestion.
Is your motion to consider it tonight? Is that what your motion is?
And to reconsider for the next.
To move it?
Right.
That would automatically happen unless there is a motion right now to consider it tonight. So I would assume we.
So we can actually adjourn the meeting, or do we?
We can go to E now, yes.
Okay. I need a motion so I can move on to public comments.
There was a motion by Councilmember Gomez.
Actually, we didn't even need that motion. I think Councilmember Gomez just wanted to move the item to the next meeting, but per the rules, automatically it would just move to the next meeting.
Okay.
Unless you wanted to consider it tonight, in which case you would need a motion to do that.
Okay, we will move it to the next meeting.
Now we just move to item E, public comment.
Okay. So we're on public comments now. I do have some cards, and it's a two-minute time limit here. Deanne Hudgens. And after Deanne, Maggie Martin. Two minutes.
I'm glad I have these written, because I think I can get them in two minutes. My comments are on the different methods used by our newly-elected councilpersons when making their appointments to committees and commissions for the council per the city. Councilperson Ramirez's appointments were immediately handed out to her campaign committee and friends. Councilmember Jones invited citizens of Victorville to apply for the position for which they were interested and are qualified. Interviews were held, and the most qualified person was offered the position. As a family of five generations in this valley, we want to thank Councilmember Jones for her commitment to excellence in our city. Victorville needs and deserves the best people serving on these committees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Maggie Martin, after Maggie. Chef Beisho.
Real quickly, on the homeless situation, I just want to tell you guys for the record where I stand on that. I feel for these people, I have a lot of compassion for these people, and I do my best within my own personal sense of boundaries to assist these people. I don't believe anyone in America should go hungry without shelter, so on and so forth. That said, homelessness is a societal issue. It is not a city council responsibility to solve, or the police, to solve all the ills of the world. I'm glad the city council is involved, but I wanted to stay personally within a real tight structure, a real tight boundary, because ultimately, when we have our fellow man on the streets, it's up to us, their fellow man, their fellow man, to help them, to help them up. It's not the city itself. It's not their primary responsibility. So I wanted to state that, you know, so you would know that's where I'm coming from. And to Mayor Protemp Ramirez, I am flabbergasted by your behavior here tonight at this council. It's mirroring the person to your right, my left, when you're going to engage.
You have thirty seconds?
You're going to engage with another council member. I'm sure you're mature enough and educated enough, praise in public and scold in private. That just looked like high school on your part to me. I'm very disappointed. Ms. Jones, I know my time is running out, but just let you know, you are my new heroine. Thank you very much.
Chef Beisho, and after him, Ramiro. No? Okay. Ramiro Rodriguez again.
First of all, about the video, the homeless situation last week that was presented here, my complaint was that part of the beginning of the video where you guys presented all the statistics was not included in the video viewing from home. But I applaud the presentation of police officers, what they're doing, going down there in the trenches and talking to people with such respect, that some organizations don't talk to the people with that respect, and to inform us and to enlighten us how the people there are handling the situation, and what the police department, the sheriff's department, is doing to help those people and to prevent anything bad from happening from them. That really was very motivational. So what I said before, I'd never criticize the police department. On the contrary, great job that you guys are doing and what you guys are doing down there. That's way beyond what you guys, your job description asks for. That's more of a human side from your part. So thank you. Thank you very much. And, well, as to a few minutes ago, when Mr. Cox left, the meeting stopped. They asked if you guys wanted to continue. You guys could have continued. Many times, the councilman, Nagretti, would get up, or Kennedy would leave for the bathroom, and the meeting would go on. But it stopped until Mr. Cox got back. Why couldn't the other four city council members continue with the meeting?
Because we needed a break.
Well, in the beginning, it didn't seem like that. You just.
You have thirty seconds?
We were just gathering, seeing what was going on. And on part of that, Ms. Ramirez, I'd like to talk to you briefly after about your university idea. It's a beautiful idea. That'd be great. Thank you very much, and good night.
Okay, those are all the cards that I had for the public comments. At this time, we're on E three. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I missed something. Mayor, city manager, do you have anything for this evening to report?
I do. Just a couple. I have a list of items, and I'm going to just go through a couple really quickly. A couple of notable building projects that maybe you're interested in. There's a new shop opening here in the Civic Rogers Plaza, just north of City Hall. Wingstop is going in, so that'll offer a new feeding opportunity there, just north of us at City Hall. Interesting to know that Palmdale and Elevato, the old Ralph's building there, has been vacant for quite some time. We're actually in plan check for a Cardenas Market in that center. So that'll certainly add some new life to that center and help revitalize that area a little bit. And then, one thing that I'd like to do is introduce to you somebody that is truly behind the scenes with the city of Victorville. A gentleman in the back at the door that's holding it open or holding it from shut is a gentleman by the name of Brandon Kales. He's our information technology manager. Most of you know him because he's helped solve all of our, solve all of our technology issues when our computers or iPads or what have you don't work, certainly responsible for helping us function up here. Brandon Kales has been with us for twenty-two years. Behind that glass, he, along with another staff member, actually monitor, watch, make sure everything is running smoothly. So that's why I call him the man behind the scenes. He and I had been in this organization, we started pretty close to right around the same time, twenty-two years ago. He's grown with this organization, promoted through the ranks. I'm sad to say that he's leaving the city of Victorville to move to our neighboring jurisdiction, town of Apple Valley. It's a promotional opportunity for him moving on, but I certainly want to take this opportunity to say thank you for your twenty-two years of service. Also, would like this to be an opportunity for the council to say thank you for your service, and wish you the best of luck in Apple Valley.
Definitely. Thank you so very much.
That's all I have.
All right. Then we move on to E three, and this is for councilmember discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. I do have two items that I would like to agendize. The first one would be for the primary nomination for the Victor Valley Economic Department Authority Vida, and this would be for the primary position.
That's a motion to add?
That's a motion.
Consideration of appointment of that position.
Yes. So I'll do, do them separately, so that.
Do them together if you wanted to.
I can. Wonderful. That'll save us time. And the second one is for the alternate nomination for the Mojave Desert and Mountain Solid Waste, JPA.
That's a motion to base it.
So that's my motion.
Right. Motion to base it or replace.
Do agendize it at the next meeting.
Motion by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Mayor Protemp Ramirez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Anyone else have anything to agendize?
Have nothing. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You don't have anything?
I would like to put on the next agenda to recognize Black History Month, which is the. the month of February, and also for the month of May, I would like to recognize the Cinco de Mayo. Uh, culture is the fiber of life. We are who we are and we should always be proud of our past before it gives us our future. Um, and that's it.
I'd like to second those motions. Oh, I'm sorry, they're not even, yeah, they are motions, right, to add to the next calendar. I'd like to second those.
Motion by Mayor Protemp Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I, I'm favorable on that.
Motion carries unanimously.
Anyone else have anything to agendize?
Yes, I do.
So we move on to E-four?
I have several of them. So the upcount, the upcoming California League of Cities events, city council enhanced learning through events and the allotment of city council budget. So I move to have on February nineteenth, twenty nineteen, a discussion and possible action in regards to councilmember allotment budgets, city council, kid, city council enhancement learning and all upcoming California League of City events.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
Thank you for making my case. The second one, to bring back discussion about streetlights priorities along with financial budget costs. So my motion is to bring back discussion and possible action, uh, regarding the finances and the street lighting priorities to discuss and find out where the city engineer is at with the street lighting. It never came back. I, I'm going to presume that hopefully it's gonna fly in sometime, but because I don't trust that, I think that needs to be agendized.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Mayor Protemp Ramirez. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The third one is, um, the motion is to include in our February nineteenth, twenty nineteen agenda, the discussion and action about the city manager's concurrent behavior and what I call discriminatory, discriminatory acts that are still occurring to date. Um, discussion and possible action in regards to the city manager's ostracization and discriminatory distinction from singling out only one council member from all the rest, and this is already documented in writing as well.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
Thank you again for making my case. I appreciate it. Number four, have Mayor Garcia reimburse the city for her, what I call abuse of power toward the general public outside of the city hall during her private interactions while she was at a public restaurant. So my motion is to bring back on February nineteenth, twenty nineteen, the cost that was incurred by the city when the representation of our city attorney stepped in to have the mayor pay back our taxpayer dollars and our taxpayer contributors, all financial expenses that were garnered by her personal affair that was entitled abuse and harassment of a public, of a general public member that sued her for such allegations. And this actually went to court. So I would, the remedy that I think the city council would, after loaning her this money, which I call the loan, is to pay back our constituents.
If I may say, um, it may be out of order, that person was actually brought in by Ms. Gomez to harass me. I don't even know who that gentleman is.
Right now, we should just consider the motion and see if there's a second for it.
Good. Okay.
As a, as a point of order, I would appreciate that the mayor and the chair would also respect the decorum and not interrupt and be out of line where we're discussing items to be entering. And that was my time. So I'd like to enter that into the record as, uh, decor, lack of decorum and also violation of our policies that we have consistently adhered to and we see myself doing it. So I appreciate that.
Motion made by Councilmember Gomez. Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
Those are all.
Anyone?
I have no items.
Okay. This made an adjourn.
As a point of order, we still have reports from councilmembers, which are three, three minutes, and our policy does that, not state that you can just automatically, um, withdraw that. So as a point of order, I'd also like to enter that into the record.
Good. Thank you. Stay on top of it.